I guess unless really someone pushes.
You know what, maybe I'll send them, I'll send you the link on our website.
Yep.
And, you know.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. I just looked and I went, oh my gosh, seven minutes to meeting.
Lily, the flowers look gorgeous. The pink, all the pink baskets. I don't know if she can hear me.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Lily, can you hear us?
I, I, oh.
She can't. Good.
Good, good. That's okay. You don't need to say anything back. I just wanted to let you know that they, they're beautiful.
Did somebody say something? I'm sorry.
Renee was saying you're gorgeous tonight.
Oh, yes. And the flower baskets. I was talking about.
Wonderful. Yeah.
I love this time of year. They're just beautiful. I don't know how to put things together that, like that, and they're beautiful.
Well, we, we get lucky sometimes with the right grower and the right species, not species, but type of flower. Some are not successful. We've learned that the hard way.
Yeah, I remember last year's being really pretty too, and maybe that was just the, the, um, my perspective, like, oh my God, flowers, thank you.
That, they had, um, very particular type of flower I discovered a few years ago, and they've had a lot of success with it. So I've been very happy with it because it was hit or miss before that. It's challenging in those baskets because it, they're, they're susceptible to drought and, and they get buffeted around and some of the plants can get bossy and overcome the other plants, so it only looks like there's one type of plant in there. Interesting thing to figure out those baskets. Very interesting.
Yes.
And the window boxes were not, were not as planned this year because the boxes themselves were larger. So they planted them the same, but they were in a larger container so that looked much more sparse, but I think it's going to end up being okay because usually they get overgrown anyway.
And the ones in Village Hall, or are those the ones you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
The ones at Village Hall, or are there some?
Yes. Usually they took over a larger window box. They, they were confused because usually our window boxes are about this big and have planted, instead we got this big. And so they had the same number of plants, which is what we purchased in a much larger container than the smaller one. That looked like it was a little sparse, but actually I think they will, they'll catch up eventually.
Hey, Justin and Dan.
Everyone.
Hello.
I just got out of a book, book club discussion on, we have one minute for BS, don't we? I just got out of a book club discussion on Invisible Man and Native Son.
Whoa.
Those, man.
We can't do that in one minute, Dan.
But it's devastating stuff. And so, hi. Renee, have you read Invisible Man?
I have.
Yeah.
A lo, a long time ago, though. You, did you recently reread it?
Yeah.
For the book club?
Read it.
Okay.
Read it 30 years ago and then.
Yeah.
You know.
Read it in college.
Yeah. I know.
I mean, I haven't been out of college that long, but you know.
I have.
At least, so you were muted. I don't think she heard you.
There we go. I said, what's college? Okay. Is it?
Thirty.
Yep, we're good?
We're good.
Okay. Are we recording?
We're recording.
Oh, okay, thank you. There's a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Keating.
Um, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lightkev?
Lightkev, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for, oh, first of all, before I say that, I should ask if anybody does have anything to disclose this evening regarding any of the agenda items before us.
Keating, I do not.
Lampier, I do not.
Trustee Lightkev, I do have one item to disclose related to the ethics board referrals. I wanted to comment that as I filed one of the complaints, I will be recusing myself from the discussion.
Okay.
Stetser does not have anything to disclose.
Okay. Uh, Lily?
I, Lampier, I do not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, maybe I missed that. And.
That's right.
Okay, Plummer, I do not. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for attending tonight. Before we begin, I will ask the village clerk to remind us of our guidelines for submitting any questions and comments regarding items pertaining specifically to the agenda for this evening.
Okay, the public may speak only during a period of the meeting or any other time as the majority of the board allows. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization, if any. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officers. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time. They may have to another speaker during. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, interrupt a speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body and not to any member thereof. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications. You can use the question and answer box. These are questions I can answer quickly. I will answer them for you. Um, I ask that you limit your comments to two or three, keep it, and try to put them all into one. When you spread out several comments, it makes it very difficult for me to answer those questions and give them to the board. Let's see, then that'll be it. If there's any questions and concerns, as I said, I can reach in the comment, question and answer area.
Great, thank you. We'll start with department reports. Building inspector, Steve? Hello, he submitted his report. Oh, Steve, you're muted. Yeah. Are there any questions for Steve this evening regarding his report?
Yeah, Steve, what was the nature? You said you reached out to numerous business owners again in regards to the conditions of shame placed in the back parking lot areas after receiving several more complaints from residents. What's happening there? Is it solvable? Are you getting good assistance?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Steve, you lost it.
You cut out for a minute there.
I don't know why. You can hear me now?
Yep.
All right, um, the, the story I'm getting from most of the business owners is that they are having a really hard time getting employees to be able to survive running their business, let alone do some of the extras. But I mean, I keep going down weekly, talking to them and saying, look, you know, we're getting, you know, citizens are concerned, we need to clean up the areas, and they all say they'll get to it as soon as they can. I, the only thing I can do is just keep, you know, reiterating to them that it's important that they keep the area clean.
Well, we did have our cleanup. You know, we did the cleanup and thanks to everybody who came out and helped. It was really great. But we really have tremendous traffic, I think, with the weather and just people, you know, just wanting to be out. I don't know, I think, I'm concerned, you know, it, I understand they don't have helped, but we, we cannot have trash all over, you know. I'm not sure I have the answer, but I'm, I'm concerned about it, and maybe we need to take a look at this in a different way. And, and Zach, I know, you know, DPW is down there over the weekend, always emptying out, you know, our bins. Um, it, it's, it's a lot, but I do feel, feel for the owners. I know it's been difficult for everybody, and it's not just within our community.
Yeah, the, the gentleman, the manager of the coal tower, they, you know, the area behind it, I've heard several complaints about that. He refixed all the landscape blocking and two days later somebody backed into it and knocked it all down again. So, I mean, they're doing, they're, you know, I will keep on them, but I think they're doing the best they can, given the situation. And like you say, the amount of, of people and traffic down there right now is, is insane. Um, I think it, I think it's a little hard for anybody to keep up.
No, we understand. I mean, I'm hoping that this is just temporary until they can, you know, get the help and get things corrected, you know. Zach, yes?
Hey, Steve, I did notice that the enclosure for the dumpsters behind the coal tower, there are some slats missing on the side of it by the grease trap. Um, I'm wondering if that's part of the problem with, with critters getting in there and pulling the garbage out of the dumpsters. Every once in a while, I notice that the, uh, the lids on the dumpsters are still open. I mean, even if they just closed them and, and, and fixed those slats on the enclosure, I'm sure that would be something to help.
Yeah, I will, I will approach Adam and regard, it's funny you say that because we took our walk today down to the nature preserve. As I was coming back, I left you guys and walked up, I got up near that where the, the pine tree is dying, there's a garbage can there. I jumped a squirrel with a bottle and goes, it goes flying across the lawn, Miss Lake. You know, scared the heck out of me because it comes jumping right up with a bottle, like, looks at me like, ah, I got it, hi.
Yeah.
Well, if only we.
I will, I'll approach Adam about keeping that closed and, and fixing up the enclosure.
That, that would help. Thank you. That would help. Any other, any other questions for Steve? Okay.
I did notice one thing, just kind of a side note, I went on Charlie Fox a little bit about his area. Um, I did notice that he fixed a, like a bumper barrier by the little pavilion near North Field Music, and they also cleaned up the dumpster area back that's behind John's house.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
You know, we're getting some progress.
Thank you. Great. Okay, next up, um, DPW. Zach?
I'm muted myself. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions in regard to my report, but there is one thing that I would like to discuss with you guys tonight. Um, this is in regard to the oak tree at 38 Alton. We met with, uh, the company, the, the representative that, uh, that would be cutting the tree down. Um, and also a gentleman, his name is Jesse Phelps, and he has a mill, and he is willing to take the wood from the tree and turn it into things for us, for the village, and for himself. So we're working on putting together a plan right now, um, for cost of it all, and it sounds, it sounds pretty neat, the ideas that he has, and I think, uh, a lot of the community, the residents around here, I think, would be interested in some of the, the stuff that he could make with the wood from this tree. So that's just an update as to where we're at with that tree. Open to move forward with it as quickly as possible. I just gotta wait for a couple estimates coming through from, from those guys. I should have more to report on this later.
Yes, Lily, sure.
Thank, thank you. May we expect that the board will have a field trip to the oak tree in order to discuss its future? And some of the assessments, and will we get a second opinion?
Sure, why not? I mean, what does the rest of the board think?
I thought it was pretty clear in the last presentation that, that from a safety standpoint, it made sense to take it down now. I, I know we were going to do a field trip to the arboretum, but I, I wasn't aware we were going to do one to the oak tree.
I mean, did, is it something where, I'm not sure, do you want to, I mean, we could meet up again, I guess, with some of the arborists, maybe, and I, I don't know, what are we, what's the outcome? What are we thinking, Lily?
I think what I, what I am wondering is typically when we undertake any work, that we get more than one opinion. Uh, I, I do believe that we have, I'm trying to remember the name of the company, was it Big Oak, was the name of the company? Uh, that, that came and gave us the original assessment with the, when the, um, branch came down. So I'm just wondering if we might also receive another opinion. So we have two, just like when you're hiring a contractor, you get more than one estimate. I'm, I'm waiting for Jesse's response regarding the cost. I'm sure that, um, it's going to be a little complicated because he, he will figure out his cost to take it down against, weigh it against how much the wood might be worth to him. But that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about an assessment of the tree. And I don't know, Zach, you didn't elaborate about that. You just talked about the possibility of him taking down and sort of the, of the mechanics behind that. I'm more interested in an assessment of, of the tree so that we have a second opinion to back up the first regarding the health, the potential health of the tree.
Can, can you help me out here? Because I thought in the past, wasn't there another arborist involved? Maybe I'm wrong, you know, maybe I'm missing something. Way back when the branch fell off.
Well, I had, um, a gentleman from Bartlett Tree Experts come through, and he's the one who, uh, he made up the mitigation, um, the quote for mitigation for the tree. But he said that it is just that, just the mitigation, um, from liability or, you know, from branches falling off of it. Nothing's guaranteed because to get an actual idea of the internal condition of the tree, you gotta start cutting into it. So it's, it's really a gamble, um, in the end, so it's, I, I can bring in another company to see if if someone else has another idea, but I mean, we know that the tree has rot running through it, and that's why the large limbs are falling off.
I thought they identified two, two distinctive fissures of decay going up the one side of the tree. That was my understanding with the most recent um, arborist that looked at the tree.
Correct. So there, there are areas that are compromised, and it's just a matter of time. And his idea was just to take some of the weight off of the, the existing branches to try to prolong the life of the tree and mitigate.
So that was the mitigation, but he couldn't guarantee that it would.
Correct.
Wouldn't really prolong the tree. That was, that was actually what was at issue the last time.
It's a dying tree, and you know, it's just to prolong the tree's standing versus.
Well, there's a public safety issue that we had discussed last time, so, um, I guess, you know, the question for the board then, I, I agree with Dan. I thought we had moved along maybe a little further that, that, that we had all agreed that the tree was unsafe and, you know, what to, how to approach it in terms of taking it down, which is why there was the discussion then. Could we sell the lumber? Could we get somebody to, to work with the lumber from the tree, which is where Zach is now, where he spoke with this gentleman today? And so now, I mean, I put it before the board, who is interested in getting another arborist in? I mean, you know, where, where are we with this? This is a public safety issue. It has been identified. We are, we're all concerned about the tree, and we all love the tree. So, um, what, yes, Dan.
I, I don't think a, a second opinion would hurt anything, and it could be pretty quick and hopefully pretty cheap, and I think it's good due diligence, so I'm, I'm not opposed to a second opinion.
Sure, sure. Any other thoughts from Renee, Justin, anybody?
I agree with getting another opinion.
Yeah.
I thought, I mean, can't, can't hurt.
Can't hurt, for sure. Okay, yeah, Justin, you're not, yes?
That's, that's fine with me.
Okay, okay, sure. Yes, and Lily?
Okay, thank you. Uh, what I was interested in, I don't know if we had gotten a quote, if we had received a quote, um, so that we are having all the information in front of us when we make the decision. The mitigation might be one way to deal with the public safety factor, and how much would that cost as opposed to removing the tree and how much that would cost. So I think there's a little bit more fact finding before it becomes, comes before the board and we make a vote.
Sure. I, I don't think we're voting on anything per se. I think this is coming back for discussion. So, um, Zach, you, you actually had given us some numbers last time. Maybe you can refresh everybody?
Yeah, so for the mitigation, um, there was about $2,000, which did not include any cabling, which could have, it could be a possibility, which would help keep the branches in place for the time being, um, and $3,000 to remove the tree. That $3,000 to remove the tree does not involve anything with, uh, Jesse Phelps and what he would be doing to the tree. That is just to drop the tree to the ground and get the wood out. So, um, if we did go through and drop a tree and just Phelps decided to do something with that wood, then that could be an additional cost.
It would be an additional cost to us for him to take the lumber from that tree? That's not my understanding.
It's possible because for selective pruning, so he can get the right lengths on all the, the branches. It's not just a matter of dropping everything down in chunks.
Right, okay.
It's, it's more of a process of picking and selecting the right places to cut, which is more time consuming operation. So it kind of takes us out of the realm of just getting rid of the tree.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Thank you for that.
Okay.
All right, so, um, we, so we, I guess we'll proceed then, Zach, where we can get a second, second opinion, you know, have somebody else take a look relative to mitigation and taking it down and what that, that would entail.
I'll work on having everything ready for the next time we meet, so.
Okay. Yes, Justin?
May I just request that while we get the second opinion, they also assess the, the risk of, you know, whether or not the cabling approach would mitigate the, the risk. I, I think it would be good to also get their thoughts on that matter.
Okay.
Great, okay. Anything else for Zach regarding his report? Okay. Um, I heard from Jeff Turner, he doesn't have a report this evening, so we can go right to the treasurer's report. Please.
Actually, I did have one more question for Zach, sorry. Um, Zach, you said that, oh, never mind, never mind, never mind, I misread.
Misread? Okay, we're, we're good. Okay, there's Brooklyn. Oh, wait, Renee, yes.
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have anything for Zach's report specifically, but there is a light out. It's been about two weeks, and I keep forgetting to, to remind you, but one of the streetlights is out on Monroe Avenue on the north side.
Okay.
One of the RG&E, you know, fancy ones.
Fancy ones?
Yeah, if you can flag it, whatever you do, you usually put like a piece of tape around it or something.
Yep, I'll call it in tomorrow.
So, um, on the ba, on the streetlight pole, isn't there a number that we can look at to tell you the streetlight number?
Oh, there is. I know which house it's front of because it's in front of my house. So.
We can give a house number.
I'll just email you.
That one's actually problematic. Uh, yeah, so it's associated with, there's a, there's a number on the pole and also the, uh, the property address. And, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that's good for people to know that you can identify the, a streetlight if it's out that way with the number. Yeah.
If, if you go on RG&E's website, they have an outage list where you can report streetlight outages. All you really need is the address if you don't know the actual whole number, because sometimes on utility poles, there are three or four different numbers. So as long as you, as you identify where the, the outage is through the address and put in the, like an identifier, like a, a caution tape on the pole, they can find it. It's, it's pretty simple. It only takes a couple minutes.
So those go out on these main streets a lot. Are you telling me we can just go straight to RG&E and we don't have to necessarily bug, bug you about it?
Yeah, if you want.
Okay, I never knew that.
Post about that. That's a good one. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty simple. If you go on their website, it's, it's takes about two minutes.
Okay, I'll do that. Then never mind, cross it off your list. I'll just go, go do it myself.
I don't mind doing it. I'm sure there are more.
Yeah, you're in touch with RG&E all the time, I know. Great, okay, thanks. Well, hi, Brooklyn. We're looking forward to the report.
Uh, yes, we do have two reports this week. Typically, we usually have one abstract, but with the change of the fiscal year, we're just keeping everything separate. So we do have one report with everything dated before 5/31, and then we do have a second report with everything dated for after 6/1. So this might be a trend maybe for the next month. Um, we do have a few projects that started in May and may be completed in June, so we just are looking to get everything cleared up, and once we have all of our statements in and we can go forward in the new fiscal year. Were there any questions on the report?
I didn't see any callouts in it, so there was nothing unusual?
Uh, no, not at all. Um, the highest thing we have on there was our website hosting fee, uh, which came in. So we're going to see a lot of annual fees coming in at this time of the year, so we typically may see a few higher things, but that's about enough and out of the norm.
Thank you. It's all self-explanatory. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, I make a motion that we accept the treasurer's reports as submitted.
Keating, second.
Okay, roll call trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lightkev?
Lightkev, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Well, anything else, Brooklyn? You're good?
Uh, yeah, that's it. If anyone has any questions.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Okay, village clerk report?
Yes, I included for the board a document I've received from the Department of Health and Human Services through the CDC. We've been a community selected among 4,500 communities participate in a survey that's going to be put out. That has not arrived yet, but this was a letter giving us an idea it was coming. So I'll probably be reaching out to trustees, staff members to assist in getting the survey done. It looks like it'll provide us reports that we can use with planning with our community, so it looks like a good thing to be part of this survey. Any questions, you know, of Renee?
Renee, yeah, I did. Um, I was just wondering how much time this is going to take from the sta, you know, staff resources. I know it's a voluntary thing and it will be good, but.
I think, um, we'll make, be able to make the assessment when we get it and see how detailed it is. It probably will be something we'll have to piece in parcel to people and have everybody jump in and help to get done. But it might be worth doing because it looks like we'll get some useful information that could be used in future planning. And real quick, I just, since we have 32 people in attendance tonight, which seems like an all-time high for us, or pretty close, I just want to remind people tax bills did go out. We are receiving them in. If you want a no contact payment, we have our Dropbox, and if there's any questions or concerns, I've obviously give our office a call. And that's all I got tonight. Oh, real quick, I do have another announcement. No, not really announcement. Um, we've had concerns, I've been receiving comments back and forth from the public board members. I want to remind everybody, I put out the packet around four o'clock on the Friday before the meeting. So if you're looking a little bit earlier, you're not going to see it. I'm working on getting it because I'm trying to get the, all the information I can into that packet. So it is sounding like it's going out last minute. That's be on purpose because I'm trying to complete it with everything we have. In addition, if there's an agenda item and there's nothing following that agenda header sheet, that means I don't have anything. So if you put something on the agenda and there's information to follow with it, please provide it to me. And we need to make sure I'm being included or CC'd into emails. I've been left out of some key meals, key meals? No, I didn't miss a meal. Emails, and therefore I couldn't provide that information in the packet. It was only upon further research. It was only upon further research, reaching out to people, I was able to locate those emails. So just kind of keep me in the loop and remember if you add an agenda item, if there's additional documentation, please provide it as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. It, it really, it's, it takes a lot to put all the packets together. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts. So. Yeah, we should all be a little more aware. Thank you for that. Uh, moving on, non municipal use permit applications. The first one up is the pride parade. Let me move her forward.
Okay, Ms. Evans, you're open.
Fantastic. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thanks everyone for entertaining our permit request. I, I'd first want to say thank you. For once again issuing the pride proclamation this year and even more importantly, for unanimously approving. The raising of the pride progress flag. There are so many young people, old people and middle aged people like myself who it means a lot to. Including the people uh in my family. So thank you very much for that. Uh, we are asking for a permit to have a walk uh from the community center on Lincoln Avenue. Towards South Main Street and ending at the gazebo. Uh, this is going to be a very well regulated and educational event. It's directed towards uh the community about community building. And it's going to be very family friendly. We're going to gather uh everyone who arrives at the community center. Do a bit of uh safety and education before we leave. We have identified volunteers to serve as safety captains, you know, with the beginning, middle um and end of the route to make sure everything goes well. We have volunteers that are going to be making certain that we take care of any trash that might be left behind. And we expect a very orderly procession from the community center down to the gazebo. Just a nice celebration of community.
Okay. Yes, Lily.
Thank you. Thank you for that Kendra. Um, I, I'm wondering, as it wasn't quite clear. Are, are you using the sidewalk only or do you plan to walk in the street?
Right now, we're planning to use the sidewalk only. Um, part of what we've already done is reached out to the fire department and I've reached out to Sheriff Baxter. I've already spoken to um the zone A captain here for Pittsburgh and we'll be having a meeting. Fingers crossed that the permit gets approved today uh with the community liaison for the LGBTQ plus events. And they will talk about whether they do want to close the streets down for us or not. But at this point, we're planning a sidewalk walk towards the gazebo.
Thank you. And your insurance that you will be providing uh certificate to, to the village hall uh office. And with the liability there is that um, could you explain that a little bit? The village will be named, of course, on there as one of the um insured. Is that correct? Not just, not just you as a person, but the village will also be named?
Uh, yes. Uh, and we have all of the requirements that was asked for with the application and I can provide that to Dorothea first thing tomorrow, once the permit is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Renee, you had your hand up now.
I had a question about um the, the traffic mitigation. If indeed they decide they want to have or to use the road to, to walk in the road. What do we need to do with DOT and how much notice do they, do they need? Um, so we know whether that's even an option. That's probably a question for Zach or uh the mayor.
Zach, go ahead. There you go.
Uh, typically they ask for notice. You might have to fill out a permit application. Um, sometimes they will push it through depending on what it's for. But given that it's, I think it's on a Sunday. Is that correct?
Yeah, so Sunday afternoon, two to four.
I don't see that as being a uh peak traffic time. So they may um waive that, but you may want to reach out to them just to find out. I, I don't know how long you're planning on being out there. I don't know how long it's going to take people to move through there. Um, but yeah, if you're closing down roads, you gotta.
Thank you for that. I, given that it's the first, right? This would be the historic first event. It, we can't, we can't guarantee how many people will come. But I don't imagine that the procession itself will take an extreme amount of time.
Yeah, I, I agree with Zach. You would definitely, you should, if it, if you are going to use a state road, you, you have to inform NISTOT.
Not if they stand on the sidewalk, do they?
A state road, if you're using the state road.
Okay. Oh, if they want to march in the road, yes, we would, yes. They want to walk in the road. I'm sorry.
You know, sidewalk, different. Yeah, Steve.
Yeah, I would think you'd also have to contact the Monroe County Police if you, if you think you're going to be in the road at all. Uh, for a safety issue, I would, I would expect that the Monroe County Police would be called. And just kind of a note, my daughter was in Pittsburgh last Sunday. She couldn't move. Right now, yeah, when the weather's nice like that, or if it's a nice day. I mean, she said it was absolutely insane down there. So Sunday right now, if the weather's nice, we'll be at.
Certainly. Uh, the Monroe County Sheriff was the one that actually suggested that they might be willing to shut the road down for us. They were very um excited that this was a first and something that, believe it or not, that they discussed with me. I went to them saying, we're looking to process down the sidewalks. Could you, I want to make sure you know what's happening. Could you be there to help us with crossings? And then they suggested that maybe closing, close, sorry, closing the road was a good option. Um, I didn't have the follow-up meeting yet with that community liaison. Because what I was told by them was that we should get the permit approved first before we moved on to any other specifications.
Yeah, as long as they're involved, then, then you have your bases covered.
Yes.
That was real good with the DOT as well. Um, that you've, you've looked at closing the roads down and you have the sheriff's support on that.
Perfect. Thank you, Zach. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Zach, who, who is the contact at DOT?
Uh, contact the regional east department on Lyndon Ave. Um, and whoever answers the phone will be able to direct you to the right person.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks Renee for getting that info for me.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application, uh, to approve the permit application.
The forty-five day. Waive the forty-five day.
Yeah, that's right. We need to have the forty-five day. Thank you.
Was that what you were waving about Jeff? The forty-five day?
He's waving and saying, yes, it is the forty-five day.
I'll make a motion to approve the application and waive the forty-five day wait period.
I'll second Stetser.
Okay.
Okay, roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanthir.
Lanthir, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib.
Lightgib, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Hey, thank you to Kendra and Tiana Lee's for organizing the event and it's, it's a big deal and really appreciate your service to the community.
Hey, I really can't thank you all enough. I've got a teenager sitting next to me for, through this meeting because she was so excited about this event and has been helping with the planning. You all know Anna and she's thrilled. So thank you very much for showing her how government works. So thanks a lot, everyone.
Well, thank you. Take care. Okay. Next up, Pittsburgh Little League Parade.
Okay, I'm looking and I don't believe anybody's here for the parade, which means you get me. Give it one chance here.
You're stepping up to the plate.
I'm looking.
Boom, boom.
Boom, boom.
Had to say it.
I didn't bet, I pitched. Okay, no, Mr. Maggots is not here. So I'll proceed. Um, this is their annual parade. It's, looks like it's pretty much the same. The parade will begin at ten AM from Southern High School. Proceed left on Southern Street, right onto Lincoln, left on the south, right on South Street. And ultimately end at Ford Field about ten forty-five. In the past, in my understanding, this is pretty short and they indicated they will notify the town of Pittsburgh Fire Marshal. They probably should notify Steve as well, Monroe County Sheriff's Office, the volunteer fire department and the ambulance service as well.
And the DOT.
And DOT.
Okay.
I'll make it do approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lily had her hand up. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I was going to make a motion that we approve and waive the forty-five day requirement.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanthir.
Lanthir, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib.
Lightgib, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, town of Pittsburgh.
Okay, in the past, this has been a non municipal use permit. This year, they, since everything is happening on town of Pittsburgh properties, they're just informing us of these upcoming events. So we're aware of what's going on. And that's pretty much all I have to say. All I can say is it looks like a great concert series and a bunch of events and should bring out all the citizens and. Hopefully they've reviewed it and they have good luck with their events.
Yep. Oh, wow. I'm looking at the fall events fireworks. Okay. Wonderful. All right. Thank you for that.
And as a reminder, they are. Planning to do some kind of candlelight night and it's early December. So technically that is still fall. And we'll, more about, I have a chamber of commerce meeting tomorrow. No more else. I'll shoot around an email. Once, um, once we talk more about that.
Right. And when the planning, if they get to planning candlelight night, if you can let me know, because typically I serve on that committee. Thank you.
Um, yes, Dan, is that uh, that fall festival thing, is that the um, the food truck? That's not what it's called. It's like celebrate Pittsburgh or something. Do you know what I'm talking about in September?
Yeah, that.
When they have the bands?
Yeah.
That's the one? Okay.
Okay, great. Um, moving on. The American Legion one hundred year celebration. Um, and this is a, well, a request for banners to go up. Um, you know, due to COVID, they missed their one hundred year celebration uh this past year. Um, they're looking to have a celebration for uh the better part of the day on July twenty-fourth. Um, and they would like to have the banners of uh up, I think for the entire month of July. Um, Zach, I believe they've touched base with you about that because we also have the uh, the Monroe tournament as well.
I still have yet to talk to L, but we'll get it sorted out.
Okay, we can sort that out. Um, so nine banners going up for the month. Yes, Renee?
These are the same banners that they put up last year?
Correct.
I believe so. Right, right. Okay. Yep, I believe so. Is there a motion?
Just a, a question first. Um, the, the Rochester Invitational was done um by approval of the building inspector. And I was just wondering why this is being handled under different section of code. Do we require a motion or is it just discussion?
It's, it's for a whole month. So it's, it's beyond typically what would be uh the, the scope of time for banners. So that's a good question. I, I assumed we'd have to vote on it because it wasn't within our guidelines, you know, two weeks. Before, oh, I see Jeff picking up the big book.
I'll, if I can comment real quick. I know last time they approved it, they did do it through the board because it was for a full year. So the board did vote. I don't know if that's.
Because it was beyond.
Is it beyond the two weeks?
Right. I mean, that, that was my assumption, but maybe, maybe I, I would stand corrected on this. We'll know in a minute. Jeff, did you have?
I mean, that, yeah, that sounds right to me. I mean, if it's going to be within the parameters. It sounds like something over and above that you're authorizing the building inspector to do. So the motion would be to authorize the building permit to permit something that's in excess of the time period in the code. Steve, are you all right with that? Does that make sense?
He's mute.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah. See, I mean, it is beyond the scope of the, the sign permit or the banner permit. So yes. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it, obviously, for the veterans.
Okay, I, so moved. I'll make the motion that we permit the banners for the month of July for the veterans' one hundred year anniversary, the Legion.
Is there a second?
Stetser, second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanthir.
Lanthir, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib.
Lightgib, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I. Okay, we're good. Uh, application for short term retail business, Ronald Jurenci.
Ron.
Oh, hold on. Mr. Jurenci, you're open to speak.
Okay, uh, it's good to see everybody. Uh, first off, I just wanted to say how happy we were to see. The pride flag flying at village hall today. It was nice, nice to see. It's a part of the, one of the, one, many reasons I'm proud to be a village resident and it's my adopted hometown. After discussing the site at fifty State Street with a lot of people who know a lot more than we do. We've decided that the uh odds are insurmountable for us getting our business plan to run at that site to get it approved by the planning and zoning board. So in order not to waste everybody's time, we are going to drop our request fifty State Street and try to concentrate on ten Main Street, which was our original site. And move forward with that location. So uh, thank everybody for all the help you've given us. We're working through this as best we can.
Okay, great. Renee, any thoughts? Yes, Lily?
Yeah, I did have a question. I just to get to um, to reiterate what we're talking about. We've gone back now to what we refer to as Dr. Tillis's, which is actually uh town property. Is that correct? So we're back on that property.
That's correct. And I reached out to uh, uh, Mr. Schenkel today with the town. He's been ill. And uh, he was unable to speak with me today, but we're going to try to circle back with him tomorrow and get his approval, which is anticipated for that site.
Okay, so of course we would need to have that.
I was wondering if, if we can get that quickly, is there still a possibility we could get the hearing in July? Because I've cost us a whole month by trying to look for a better location already.
Okay. Now, have you, have you spoken to the uh other gentleman who has uh a, a temporary business on that site as far as coordinating?
Yes, I have. I, I approached him before I approached the board. And at first Charlie did not want me there and we talked and I said I would honor his wishes and he's changed his mind.
Okay, great. And then you would be able to provide for us, uh, of course, uh, all, everything that is asked for in the temporary use uh permit application. As clarification as to uh how you'll be hooking up if electricity is needed. Uh, trash and so parking and so forth. Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Yes, Steve.
Yeah, this will have to go to public hearing, correct?
Right.
Right. So in, in the meantime, I did talk to Kelly Klein and I've had conversation before with Paul in regards to, so. I don't anticipate, at least as far as what they said, any, any issue with the town in regards to what they did for Charlie and what they would do for Ron.
Okay. Yes, Dorothea.
Um, I just want to remind the board, the, the first time Mr. Jurenci approached the board was for the original site that he's asking to be at before. Um, we did approve a public hearing. He went through his application, which means I didn't post that. So if the board's still good with that original application, you've approved the public hearing for that before. If you were comfortable, you could set that public hearing for July eighth. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to set it until next meeting, which would be July eighth. Outside of our special meeting.
I, I moved, I'd move to uh set it for July eighth, which is the soonest we can do it. And, and hopefully he can get everything in line with the town. And if worst case, we cancel it, but hopefully it'll all move through. I, I would hope we could. Um, get a public, do I have to make a motion?
You would.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the soonest we possibly can, which is July eighth, pending proper paperwork, of course.
Lightgib, second.
Real quick, we have a request to speak from Mr. Blaister.
Um, one, one moment. Um, the attorney's hand is up, Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have a date and time in that motion. I think we had a date. I don't think we had a time.
Yeah, we need a time certain.
Six, uh, you, you, you want to say?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, seven.
So the motion is amended to seven PM? Okay.
Amended.
Okay. And there was a comment?
There's a request to speak from Mr. Blaister.
Is the board entertaining comments? Okay, I see nodding. Okay.
I'm nodding.
Okay.
Okay, I will allow him to talk.
Brief, brief comments.
Very brief, please. Thank you.
Three minutes.
Mr. Blaister, you're open to comment.
Mr. Blaista, you're open to comment.
I made I made no request to speak.
You had your hand raised. I'm sorry.
Oh, your hands raised.
It must have been accidental click.
Okay.
But I did have a, I did have a question about um, event permits. You said the town didn't need to apply for them. And outdoor assembly is uh, a temporary use only permitted by um, by a temporary use permit. It doesn't matter who owns the property. But you guys can look into that with the building inspector.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Jeff.
I I don't think we were thinking that the town had to apply. The town has to sign the application as the property owner. Not as a municipal entity, just as the property owner.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Uh, we had a motion.
And it was. We had a motion. Yep.
Okay.
Roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib.
Like have I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Hey, Ron, um, I know you know this, but it just want to say it again. That's the soonest we can do it by law. I I wish we could do it sooner than that because I know your business depends on it, but that's that's as soon as we can make it happen.
You guys have been over backwards for us and I thank every one of you and that's that's plenty early for us. Uh, we're just thrilled to have a chance.
Thank you. All the best. Okay, we have a public hearing and it's 7:16. This is a special permit application for uh, the Carol Cutter Salon.
Let me verify she's on.
Yep.
Oh, there she is. Ms. Cutter, you are on.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. How are you?
Doing good.
All right. Uh, any questions or comments from the board for Ms. Cutter? Pretty quiet crowd.
Yeah.
All right, um, I make a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Stetser, second.
Roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib.
Like have I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
Uh, we do have a person requesting to speak. Mr. Harrington. Mr. Harrington, you're allowed to speak.
Name and address, please.
There we go. Uh, Mark Harrington, 58 State Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Just, I suppose, uh, luck of the draw, uh, the uh, the traffic that is coming out of Shown Place, and I know you guys, everybody's talked about it before, but it's really become very extreme. And I worry about it, not because of a noise to me, that doesn't matter. But what does matter is I sit on the front porch and I do see uh, a lot of uh, a lot of kids riding their bicycles.
Excuse me, is this about the agenda item before us? This is a public hearing regarding uh, the Cutter Hair Salon?
No.
We asked that you speak to the agenda item.
My apologies.
Okay, and and if you have concerns, please give me a call or contact us at Village Hall.
Thank you very much. I will.
Thank you so much, Mark.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to speak or comment from the public on this agenda item?
There is no other comments to be seen.
Okay, I make a motion to close the public, excuse me, the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Lampier.
Okay, roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib.
Like have I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this item or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as delivered.
Is there a second?
Lampier, second.
Roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib.
Like have I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Good luck, Carol. Let us know what we can do to help your business, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lots of luck. Okay, next up, ethics board appointments and referrals. Uh, this evening I am appointing Mr. Jared.
I'm sorry, I I will recuse myself at this point.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Uh, this evening I am appointing Mr. Jared Cook, Mr. Lawrence Hickey and Dr. Jeffrey Hanson to the Ethics Board. Um, I would like a motion from the trustees to approve these appointments, convene the board and refer any pending complaints.
I'll make a motion to.
Hang on one second. Before you make the motion, I see Lily's hand is up. Thank you, Lily.
Thank you. I have a clarification based on what um, has just occurred with trustee Lightgib. And that is that he stated that he is recusing himself from this vote because he has either as a complainant or a complaine, uh, so I I think that that would then follow that anyone else who was, who fell into that category would also need to recuse. Is that correct? I'm asking Jeff that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a question for Jeff. If Jeff could respond to that in terms of.
Well, it's my understanding that Dorothea has kept these confidential. Nobody knows the contents of the complaint. No one knows the complainant or the person complained of. So I don't know how there would be a way to understand whether or not you had recused yourself unless you knew that you were a complainant.
Okay, yeah, and and Dorothea, let's just confirm as as village clerk, when these things are received, uh, no one else is made aware.
No, I haven't. Outside of informing the board and requesting the ethics board be seated, I have disclosed nothing regarding any complaints within my grasp. I haven't shared that with any staff member, any board member. They are locked in a safe place.
Okay, so if you have made a complaint, though, you as an individual know that you've made a complaint and then you would be ethically obligated to recuse. Is that, am I saying that correctly, Jeff? I'm I'm guessing here. This is the first first trust, so.
Are are you aiming this at somebody in particular?
Well, hang on, hang on. We we this question, excuse me, Dan, if I can just just uh, respond to Lily because she's directed this to Jeff. So if Jeff.
I I'm clarifying because we have a trustee who has recused himself. So I'm asking the reason for that recusal and, you know, does it apply across the board or why it, I, you know, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, I've never heard of a recusal regarding this, but Jeff, maybe you want to speak to that.
A new one.
So recusal should happen when you are personally involved in the decision making process. I'm, I mean, I think each trustee decides if they're personally involved in the process. For me, it would seem that just by making a complaint, if you in fact made a complaint, that's not necessarily being involved in the process. If the process is the appointment of board members seating, actually seating the board and authorizing referral of any complaints, I mean, the complaint, the trustees would either have to refer the complaints to the Ethics Board or the the Village of Pittsburgh Ethics Board or the Monroe County Ethics Board. It doesn't seem to me, you know, the actual referral, I I I'm not sure that's, but if you feel it is, you are involved, then you would recuse yourself. I think it's a, it's a matter of each trustees looking at whether or not they are personally involved in the decision to hand. And I'm not convinced that the motion to seat an ethics board and refer complaints to that ethics board is really being involved in how any complaint is handled.
Okay, that's always been my understanding as well.
Makes any sense.
Yeah, okay, but it it's simply just arms length. You're just seating a board. What happens after that is, you know, no one knows. So, um, because that's the nature of how the ethics boards work. So I I am asking for a motion from the trustees to approve these appointments. Oh, Jeff, yes.
On the other hand, if trustee Lightgib does feel that he should recuse himself, that's perfectly fine. He's given his, he's given his reasons and and that's all he needs to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was his his choice to do so. I mean, it I, you know.
Okay.
Yes, okay, so Renee, yes.
Um, so we, the, just for people who haven't been here for the whole conversation, we have been speaking about this at other meetings. Um, this ethics board will be appointed and will handle um, the the complaints that that have been uh, over the past couple of years that the village has received. And then going forward, this will be a standing board um, for any future um, complaints that come in. So it's not just to handle this group of this outstanding group.
Okay, that's correct. That is per our code. This that's per our code. The the board exists and we are filling the three seats. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I think that helps everybody. Yeah. Any other thoughts before I keep jumping into that motion? Okay. Um, so again, I'm requesting the motion, yes, to convene the board and refer any pending complaints.
I think I already made that.
Oh, you did. Okay, I didn't know if you had completed it. I'm sorry. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Lampier, second.
Before we do votes, there are three people wishing to speak and there is a question in the Q and A.
Does the board wish to entertain anybody speaking or a question?
I'm comfortable with it. Sure.
Okay, first person is Mike Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds, you've been unmuted. You're able to speak.
So there have been complaints filed against uh, Mayor Plummer and Dan Keating, and I don't think they should be allowed to vote on who who hears those complaints.
Wow, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, we'll move to the next person. It looks like Art Pierce. Mr. Pierce, you're open to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, yes, it's just, I think, I thought I had heard.
We can't hear you.
Oh, I think you dropped off.
I'm about to step away from your speaker.
I just have my laptop. Sorry about it. I'm not sure why it doesn't. But question for the board. I thought I heard at another earlier trustee meeting that there was the question about establishing a Pittsburgh Village Ethic Board when there was already a Monroe County Ethics Board in place. So there's the first question. I thought it was discussed and now I thought I just heard that there's an existing Pittsburgh Village Ethics Board. And in either regard, why is there duplication in? And I would think that that would uh, kind of preclude some of the questions that came up and that fact that uh, questions such as Lily and Ray's wouldn't be uh, even a matter of discussion since, once again, you have the Monroe County Ethics Board.
Um, this has always been in our code and we've always had an ethics board, as I recall. Um, and most municipalities, I do believe operate that way with their own uh, ethics boards. And it's 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 actually, I believe, a little more unusual for things to go to the county. And Jeff, you may want to speak to that in addition.
We've already had it. We've always had an ethics board. I mean, probably starting way before I started working with the village. I don't know when it started, but, you know, we've always had an ethics board. And I would agree with the mayor that it's probably uh, the exception rather than the rule to refer stuff to the the county board.
Well, thanks for that clarification because I I thought I heard otherwise during an earlier trustee meeting, uh, maybe one or two ago, but thanks for that clarification.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Art.
Okay, next one is going to be Peggy Carabares. I will. Okay. No, hold on. Okay, Ms. Carabares, you can speak.
Oh, Peggy, and she's muted, I think.
Yeah, looking for you to unmute yourself, Peggy.
There we go. Um, Peggy Carabares, 81 South Main Street, Pittsburgh, New York. Um, I just have a couple of questions about the appointment of the Ethics Board and I want to, I want Alisa, the mayor, to make it clear that she has no knowledge of any of the um, uh, complaints or whatever uh, be that would come before the Ethics Board in making this appointment. Because this is her, you know, it's her appointment. Um, and the board is just verifying um, uh, these three members. So if Alisa could just make clear to the public that she has no knowledge of any of the uh, complainants.
I'm happy to do that and I and I thank you for making that request. Yes. Jeff, our attorney.
I mean, you were, we were just disclosed in public that there may be a complaint against you. So I don't know. So I don't know how that would be applicable. You couldn't say that.
But I I don't know what the complaint's about. In other words, I don't.
That's correct, nor are you acting on the complaint.
Yeah.
But so I just wanted to be clear that that would be impossible now, given Mr. Reynolds' statement for you to say if he's correct in his statement. I don't know that he is. Uh, to say that y- you don't have any knowledge.
I don't have any knowledge what the complaint's about. And now I know there's one.
Right.
According to him.
There's been an allegation that there's one we don't know.
Okay, so basically what you could say then, Lisa, is um, aside from this complaint that was brought before you tonight, you have no knowledge of a- any of the complaints that are um, in the files right now.
I don't know of anything in the files at all.
Okay.
I it.
I I'm just saying, I think for for public clarification, it's important for you to make that statement.
You know, and I, and actually you bring up something else and maybe I I put this back to our attorney and the board. Um, the fact that someone publicly said, stated that complaints have been made against, whether it's me or any other trustee. Um, I would think that there should be at least a policy or an understanding for anybody making a complaint that they would not publicize that complaint. Would that be a fair thing to say? I I throw that back to the board and our attorney that they're private, you know, that it's 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 handled internally through a a distance board. Or are they simply allowed to just allege or say anything? I don't know, Jeff.
I mean, I would say that there's really no possible way that you can force a complainant to keep it confidential. We can
We have a request.
We 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 can guarantee that it will be confidential and transferred only to the Ethics Board.
Right.
But we cannot control what a complainant does after making the complaint. I mean, if it were me, if it were me, I wouldn't want people to know I made the complaint until it was acted on. Because if the complaint is unfounded, I don't know, maybe there are legal implications for for saying publicly that you made the complaint. I don't know. But I, you know, I just, I I I would not broadcast that information.
I do have one other question.
Sorry, the Dorothea had her hand up. Just one second, Peggy. I'm sorry.
Real quick, for Ms. Carabares, I would like to remind her earlier, I did state, no one is aware of what complaints I have, how many complaints I have, who they're from, what they're about. I have not disclosed that to any board member, nor would I. That is the act of my job, so I reassure you, Ms. Mayor Plummer has no idea what's sitting in the ethics complaints at this time. Thank you.
And Dorothy, I want to offer my support and thanks for that um, integrity.
I'm I'm not questioning integrity. I'm just, I want everything to be very clear to the public.
Do you feel that, do you feel that what what has just occurred is clear enough? Is there anything else we can provide for you?
Um, no, I think. Um, no, I think you've done a good job of stating that you're unaware of any, of any applications before the potential ethics committee. I, I get that. The other question I have is, when the ethics committee deliberates, does their decision then come back to the village board of trustees for execution if something should? I don't mean execution, execution, but, um, for a final decision? How does that work?
Jeff, would you like to speak to that, please?
And, and that's three minutes on the comment.
Yeah, yeah. We have to go along.
Ms. Carabares, I'm gonna remove you from speaking and let the board answer from that point on.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yeah, it's referred to the board, but not every, not every complaint will require board action. So, you know, there, there will be a report to the board. I need to see what happens to the report after that.
Hey Jeff, need you to stay right in front of your microphone. You cut out.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what happens with a complaint once it gets to the trustees.
Uh, could we follow up? Does, does that?
I'll be, I'll be thirty seconds, but you can certainly follow up. That's fine. Violations are made a matter of public record. It'll be referred to the, um, village board. Any findings of, of violation should be made a matter of public record. So it's not, once there's a termination of a violation, it becomes public. Does that, everybody got, does that make sense to everybody?
And the determination is made by the ethics board.
Correct.
That's why they're seated, yes.
The determination of a violation is made by the ethics board.
I think that's what Peggy was referring to. Is, is it referred back to the board then to make any further decisions? It sounds like the ethics board is making the determination.
Actually, it just sends its reasons for the disposition to the village board. And then, if the village board or any other entity needs to take action, once that determination is made, then that, that can be done. But if a violation is found, it becomes a matter of public record.
Great, thank you for that. Thanks for the clarification. Yes, Dorothy.
Yep. Uh, Dave Ferris, leaving us on Washington Road. Is there a conflict if a party to a complaint is choosing the board? Is the same as a party to a matter choosing the judge? It appears to be a conflict.
The, the three names were put forward before Mayor Plummer knew that. And, and we don't even know, so.
Yes, Jeff, could you please speak to this? Thank you.
I, I would say there's only been an allegation of a complaint. There's no knowledge on anybody's part whether or not there is a complaint and the nature of the complaint.
Thank you. Okay.
So we have one more speaker.
That's it. And then we, we have to move on with our business of the village.
Mr. Marshall, you're free to speak.
Hi, thanks, Dave Marshall, sixty-seven South Main. I just wanted to ask if you might speak a little bit to the uh, process of obtaining members of the ethics committee, and are they village residents outside the village? If other members of the village board participated in those discussions or interviews. I do recognize it's a mayoral appointment, so, um, just balancing those two things, how did that fall out in this case?
Uh, first of all, um, it's in the backup material that's on the website. You can see the resumes of, um, the people who responded to what was publicly noticed for our residents to apply or put in the resume. Uh, so you have access to the backgrounds of the people who have, who have uh, responded to this and have been put forth to be appointed, uh, for me to be appointed to the board.
Yep.
They are village residents as required by law.
Great.
So.
Were there a lot of applicants or very few?
There weren't as many as, as we thought, but we publicly noticed it, and, you know, that's all we can do, so.
Absolutely.
And I think if you look at the resumes, I think you will see that, um, they're, they're highly qualified in terms of backgrounds.
Yep.
Um, in terms of what we've received.
Very much. I didn't see them in there at the time, and, uh, my apologies on that. Thanks so much.
Yeah, please, please take a look, Dave. I think, I think it'll, it'll be helpful. Thanks for that.
Thanks.
Yes, Renee.
And how big is the board? Are you making all the appointments tonight?
Yes.
Just the three. Okay, thank you.
Exactly. We're seating, we are seating the board that already exists, that needs to have members seated. Is, is, is that clear, clear? Yes, Lily.
All right. Uh, also, I think it would be valuable to also make the clarification. There are certain criteria that need to be met in order to seat this board. And one of them is that the, the board members not be all of one political party. Can you verify that that is the case?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for the clarification, and that's important for the community to understand that as well. Okay.
We have a motion in a second, which we're going to call the work call.
Thank you.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Light Gibb excused himself. Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for the questions. Um, I think it's helpful for clarification always. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, uh, next item, seventy-five Monroe Avenue, meeting planning. Okay, um. Dan, do you want to speak to this as well?
Yeah, so, um, as you all know, we were approached by the, um, applicant. Forgive me if I'm using the wrong word. We were approached by Chris DiMarzo to, um, sit down and have a settlement negotiation, and this is all ground we've covered, and, um, and, uh, for him to present some new ideas. He's got a new architect. And, um, so, we, we, uh, th- there have been a couple of different ideas thrown out about that. One was to have two people from each board so that it's not a quorum meet and work this out. The other was to have uh, all three boards, the trustees, H P B and P Z B A, non-recused members have a, a big meeting that's informational in nature. Um, so really what we wanted to do tonight, and I sent around an email about this, I don't know, a week ago to the other trustees, was to kind of come up with the terms of what that meeting might look like. And, uh, so that we can hopefully approach the other boards and say, hey, this is what we were thinking. What do you think? And, and hopefully get something on the calendar so that we can have that meeting. So I laid out a bunch of terms that w- were just ideas. Uh, do you want me to share my screen and go through those, or how do you want to do this?
Well, if, and just to say, I, um, I also just sent a notice to the boards that this is what, um, Chris DiMarzo had requested, so the boards were aware that, um, Mark Four was, you know, reaching out. And so the boards could, you know, make their own conclusions about what they chose to do or not do relative to this. There is no application before anybody. Um, this is a new architect and potentially, I guess, a new design and new ideas. So, the thought was this again would be almost like a design review, just an informational meeting. Um, a workshop where the boards would be, would be publicly noticed. Uh, the boards could listen to what Mr. DiMarzo and his architect had to say. And then make a decision as to what, where, where to go from there. And it would be, uh, as I said, publicly noticed as almost like a, uh, what's the word, like a webinar, you know, so you, the, the public would be able to, you know, watch, watch the boards conduct business and and, uh, the design, potential design review, an initial process, just very, not, not in depth at all.
Can I summarize basically what the email said with the, the, the basic ideas were this?
Yeah, and then Lil, and then Lily after that, okay?
So we have, so we're all on the same page. The basic ideas were this. That it would be, some people are not comfortable with COVID doing in-person meetings yet. Um, so it would, it would be a hybrid meeting. There would be some people in the room and some people on Zoom. Uh, it is a public meeting. There would be questions allowed by the, um, the panelists. So all of the board members who are not recused would be panelists. The general public would be invited in much the same way that this is. There's not open chat, but there are questions allowed. There would be a certain amount of time. Uh, I don't know, fifteen to thirty minutes to be determined for public comment. And Dorothea would be the person who, um, you know, kind of randomly chooses the public comment. There would be a period of questions, uh, and that would come at the end. There would be a period of questions by the other board members. You know, we would ask Mr. DiMarzo to present for, I don't know, fifteen or thirty minutes, but, but also recognizing that these things can take time. And then, you know, allow the panelists to ask a question or two. Uh, but you can see with three boards and up to fifteen members, I don't know how many are recused. That could be very long if everybody is allowed to ask an infinite number of questions, so it, it would be planned to be the first of many meetings, so we don't have to, we don't have to blow the ocean. We don't, we don't have to solve everything in one day. So those were the basic terms.
And that's what you, well, that's what you're proposing as.
Yeah.
The term, that is, that is coming from you.
Yeah.
Because I may have other thoughts and the other, the trustees as well on this, and I see Lily's hands up, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Lily.
Thank you. Am I recognized?
Yes, I said yes.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yes, I, I would, um, um, support this concept, uh, but maybe with a little different definition. And I would, I personally would avoid the word "meeting", uh, because that puts, gives it a different tone. I'd also avoid the words "design review committee" because this is not a design review committee. We don't have a design review in this because there's no application.
Right.
I would, I would feel much more comfortable describing or typifying it as a presentation made by a potential developer, potential applicant or an applicant with his, with a new plan. And allow it to be, um, an opportunity for, for Mark Four to present their concept, their new concept, and not have it as a question and answer. Uh, because it opens so many doors, and, um, rather, I would suggest that as panelists or board members would write down any questions that they have, uh, for, um, submission. And not try to have the developer answer those questions, because it would stretch, as trustee Keating said, into a very long meeting. But if we wrote down all the questions and presented them at a later date, and then the developer could respond. And I feel the same about, um, members of the audience, because I don't know how that we could specify that we're interested in hearing from the, the village residents and not necessarily members of DiMarzo's team or, you know, I, I, so, and so, so it doesn't seem to be prejudiced. I would, I would feel, as I said, much more comfortable have the developer come, give his presentation, introduce his new architect, and have that architect show um, the, the village, uh, boards and the villagers what they have in mind. And thank you very much, and it was a wonderful presentation. And, you know, then we assess what we've heard and maybe come up with some questions, and that's another gathering. But for this, I think we very specifically say that this is an opportunity for, um, the developer to show us what, what they have in mind.
Thank you, Dan. Before, before, um, before you speak, I'd like to say, um, I actually agree with the presentation format as well. Um, I also, I'm using, I was using the concept of a design review format in that um, design reviews actually the public, uh, views what's going on. Because this will be the first time anybody's heard anything. So, I mean, you're, you're, you're saying questions down the road, and I, I think that's a good idea because otherwise it becomes very lengthy. And, you know, so, um, this is sort of, I think, a presentation, the first cut, the first, it's a reset perhaps. It's, it's something new going forward. Um, as we've been told by this potential applicant. So, um, you're right, it isn't technically a design review committee. You're right. I was thinking more of the format of that. Um, because I think that'd be more effective, you know, frankly, and just, and also just a cleaner presentation for presentations. Yes. Dan?
Oh, I, I, I don't necessarily agree. So, it, just with the, with the question, I, I do think asking clarifying questions, what's that? What do you mean by that? I, I think that kind of thing is okay. We're, we're not giving an opinion on whether it's good or not. We're just, you know, if, if there's confusion, I think there should be an allotted amount of time that we can ask clarifying questions. It, it seems strange to, to finally get everybody around the table and, and muzzle everybody.
Okay, you know, thank you for that. Renee, did you have your hand up? Oh, you didn't, okay. I thought you did. Maybe you're just shifting. Yes, Justin.
Um, yeah, thank you for, for these suggestions, um, Dan, and I, I think this is a, a good discussion. Um, I just wanted to let the board know that as the liaison to the planning board, I did send this email to the, uh, non-recused members of the planning board. Um, without influencing their opinions at all, just to see if they, uh, would like to, to weigh in or just they're aware of, of this discussion tonight. The, i- i- it really seems, um, uh, you know, on, on the one hand, it seems like we can enter into settlement discussions at any time, uh, legally, so this is, uh, certainly something that we can do. But it seems to be more of a question of, of strategy about whether or not this is the course we want to pursue. Um, and specifically, I'm wondering about the, um, the, the way that this is going to be, um, uh, you know, it, it seems from the perspective of the village, we want to be able to consider the criteria uh, in as neutral of a way as possible according to our design standards. Um, and my concern would be that strategically, by allowing them this forum, this presentation, um, then they're able to uh, use their, their abilities to influence members of the public, um, which is not necessarily aligned with the, uh, the interests of, of, um, uh, having the, the boards individually follow the, uh, the design standards, you know, to, to take the emotions out of this. So I guess that's, you know, that's my general concern. Um, and I wondered if, uh, we had also run this by our attorneys representing us in this matter to get their thoughts on the legal strategy.
Um, I can tell you that I did speak with Dan Spitzer and he was supportive of this.
Justin, can, can you clarify that? I didn't quite understand the influence part of your argument. Your position.
Sure, well, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that this is necessarily my position either. I think that it's the, the thing that we should be discussing and, and considering as a board. So what I'm trying to, um, uh, the, what I'm exploring here is, generally as a village, we want to have our board members who are experts in certain areas and uh, who have expertise in analyzing and, and applying a certain piece of code. We want them to be able to consider those in a methodical way. Um, and in this sense, we're really just kind of giving the, the public forum to the, um, developer, uh, which we're in litigation with um, to present their side of it. And, um, I'm, I'm just not sure if that's the, um, the strategic direction that we want to take. So it helps to hear that we've talked to our attorneys and that they're supportive of this.
Yeah, I'm not sure when you say present their side of it. I don't, I don't think this is a meeting about any litigation. Um, the request for this meeting was highly specific that, and we have made this clear to the trustees and to the public and to the other boards. This request from Chris DiMarzo is a reset. There is a new architect. There is a, a potentially new plans, new design. Um, they're keenly aware they lost the last two court cases. And they still would like to potentially proceed with a project with this village. So, I don't know that it's about giving them airtime about any litigation because that is not the understanding or why this would even be calling all of the boards together. Um, I think the idea of getting the boards together and publicly noticing this is everybody starts at the same, the same level. The same, this is what we're all seeing for the first time from an applicant that still wishes to pursue a project with this village. It has nothing to do with the litigation per se. What does have something to do with the litigation is the request from this applicant moving forward, if, if that is what happens, that they want to move forward directly into a settlement rather than go through the process. And that is something that we definitely need to discuss and consider, and our boards do. That is something different. Yes, Dan?
Uh, so real. Uh, so real quick, this is a little bit tongue in cheek when I'm about to say, but I, I'm sort of half kidding about it, but also. Not half kidding, and I wanted to get your opinions on it. It seems to me if we're gonna have fruitful and meaningful discussions. Past hurts shouldn't be. Front and center. Uh, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of history in this project, but the more we can keep it focused on. Finding a solution for it, and the less about. You did this seven years ago, and you did this ten years ago, and you did this five years ago, and it hurt my feelings. I, I think the better, I, I don't know how you regulate that, I don't think you do. I just think you, you lay it down as a, uh, as a goal, uh, in order to be able to try and get to meaningful conversations. Just wanted to know what you guys thought about that.
Yes, Justin.
Um, I, I agree, uh, just to, to respond briefly to, to trustee Keating, I, I think, um, you know, that's, that's certainly in the interest of everyone in having this discussion. Um, I, I wanted to respond to Mayor Plummer briefly as well, um, you know, and, and basically, my question is, well, if this is a. Uh, I, I understand this is not about the, uh, the litigation, um, this is considering a new application. Um, so in, in that light, uh, you know, with a new architect, this is essentially considering, uh, a new project and a new proposal, so. You know, what is the reason to treat this differently than, uh, the new proposal? Um, and, and specifically, we've got provisions in our new code, we've got things like the, uh, the pre-application conference. Um, just as another alternative to throw out there. Um, if the goal is to, to really help the applicant to. Understand what next steps are necessary, what the parameters are, and how to get the ball rolling. Um, you know, we've got this provision in our code for the, uh, the pre-application conference where, before entering the formal review process, they talk with a. Uh, you know, the chair of, um, a couple of the boards, um, or of all three boards, uh, and, and the code enforcement officer to figure out the, the path forward.
You know, I thank you for that, but I also think, um, there's so much history here, this has been twelve years in. That if, and, and if they do want to come back, I think it's important that we engage and be as transparent upfront as we can. I agree with the pre-application process, I think that is great, but. I think there's a lot of water under this bridge. Yeah, oh, Lily, I'm sorry, your hand was up, was it?
Oh, that's right, I was waiting for you to, to finish, sorry. Um, I would remind, uh, the board that. In this particular instance of seventy-five Monroe and this application. It is not, um, subject to anything that has been written in the new code. This application only, uh, is being considered under the code that existed at the time. That these special use permit, uh, was approved, and the site plan was considered, so. It's not coming under any of the, the new. And improved code that we have, uh, currently, which does include, as, uh, Justin pointed out, the, just the, um. Review committee. Uh, that being said, I, I would like, um, a clarification from the mayor. Regarding something you stated a few minutes ago, and that is. Settlement.
Right.
And application.
Right.
And to be clear, that this is not. This, from my perspective, not attempting to circumvent our process. By introducing this as a way forward. We're not circumventing our boards, we support our boards, and I would very much like to hear. If there are members of those particular boards here this evening. Their opinion regarding, because they have as, as much stake, if not more, uh, in this particular. Application than the trustees, because they're, they are the two decision-making boards, the trustees are not. PCBA.
Yep.
And, and HPP for mass and scale, and those, those are the critical.
And I thank you for.
Words.
I, I, that's why I brought it up, because there's one thing that the developer wants in terms of how to proceed. After this potential meeting, and then there's actually the process that we have, so. We, that is a topic of discussion, regardless of whether they present or not. Yes, Steve, you had your hand up, I believe.
And when was the original site plan approved?
There's a question regarding whether, whether that was one of the litigation, so we, I, that's a touchy subject, so I think that we're gonna let that one. Lie.
No, it's not, I'm not talking about litigation, I'm talking about when the site plan was approved, because it may not be a valid site plan anymore. Based on time, they're only valid for a certain number of years.
Yes, but they were given an extension, so, and that is up to the PCBA, so. They had asked for extensions all along, I do believe that they are up to date with all of those, but I feel much more comfortable with PCBA. Was speaking to that, um, but yes, they are subject to the previous code, not the current code.
Okay, that's what I was.
Okay, Jeff, Jeff has something, yeah, he's a lawyer.
Yes, exactly, I have, uh, uh, Jeff, and then I see, Dan, did you have your hand up after that? Okay, thank you.
I, obviously, I'm not gonna advise this board on the law. But I would recommend that you contact your attorneys. To ask them whether. Which, which version of our code they think applies to each process. Um, the ZBA process, the trustee process, and the HPP process. It seems to me that the trustees do have, I'm, again, I'm not telling you this. I would query your, your counsel to see if the trustees do in fact have additional action items here. And I, and I don't, I'm not gonna say one way or the other what I think. But I, I, I would recommend that that clarification be sought from your attorneys.
A very, very valid point, and thank you. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, Dan, yes.
Yeah, so Lily, really good point on the other boards' involvement, and, and really, all, all we're trying to do. Is come up with some kind of structure and say, this is how we think it could work, the other boards will take part or they won't. Um, I, I hope we can all find a way to get around a table, or maybe the other boards have some kind of idea. But we just wanted to do something and move this forward in some way and say, hey, maybe this is how a meeting could work. And go from there.
But I, I, I am concerned, and that's why I brought it up, and Lily spoke to this as well. My, my thought about whatever this meeting, this presentation, we should say presentation, I think that was really, uh, spot on. This is a presentation, what happens after that relative to. Us consulting with our attorneys, each board consulting with their attorneys. Relative to what this potential applicant wants. Regarding going right into a settlement, or do they go through the process that we have? Is it with the old code, is it with the new code? We may need some more information here, all the boards may need some more information as to how to proceed. To me, this meeting was nothing more than, as you said, a presentation, getting everybody on board, new architect, new idea. After that, it is about what, what legal counsel says. And, uh, counsels each board with how to proceed. I, I agree with Lily on that, and also, I think Jeff, Jeff's comment is spot on.
Okay, so what are we proposing? Do we want to have? Send a note to the other boards and say, this is how we might think this might work?
I, I think that'd be a good idea, but I also think we need to speak, each board should speak with their counsel about this, I mean, we have people here tonight. And we can reach out to the boards, I think, you know, Jeff raised some key points that we need to clarify going forward. You know, um, I separate this from what the presentation would be, to me, this was simply taking it at space value. That there's a new architect and they have a new concept.
Do we wanna, do we wanna publicly notice something and? Uh, because it's, it's gonna take a while to figure all this out. Do we want to get something on the, on the calendar, even if we change it?
Mm-hmm, I see what you're saying. Well, we need to speak with legal counsel, we're gonna have to set that up as well, is the board in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting the nods, thank you, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And also to contact the other boards as well, if we might get at least a letter, some sort of a formalized.
Right.
Response from them as to what their position might be. That'll be very helpful.
Okay, and our next meeting's not for another month, and this has been sitting on our, in our inbox for a couple months already. And, you, you know, uh, the thought of, of. Not making the decision for a month and then publicly noticing it, now we're talking about, we're gonna have a meeting in August that was requested. In, at the beginning of April, it, it just, it feels like a little too much. Um, how, how can we, it, it, we, we've got somebody who wants to invest in our community, how can we, uh, support?
I hear that.
Good process.
I think we're all, I think we all hear that, I mean, I, I, I think we're all in agreement with that. What, what if, what is that, the dates then, Dorothea, that we're looking at? You're muted.
The village board does have a special meeting, although I hate to say it, on June twenty-second, so. If that gives the boards time to reach out to the other boards, and then you could set a date there if you had your information, otherwise you're looking at July. First meeting in July.
Meeting coming up, and we can maybe poll the other boards, that, you know, see where they're at. Does that make, oh, I'm sorry, Justin, yes.
Uh, yeah, just a, a couple of quick comments, I, I wanted to mention, first of all, that this, um. Whether or not we have this meeting, to me, doesn't appear to be the only way for the applicant to move forward. And, and specifically, I'm thinking of the list of parameters that were submitted to the application in terms of design ideas. And they are able to, uh, communicate with the other boards in, in terms of, um, what is desired, so. This is not a hard stop to the, the process, as there appear to me to be other channels that they can, uh, advance through. Um, and my other, uh, comment was just that, um, since I did reach out to the, um, uh, the planning board. Um, and it seems as though the, um, uh, the HPP was also contacted, I just wondered if anybody had a, a comment tonight, I didn't want to. Close out any, uh, thoughts from those boards.
Yeah, oh, yes, Dorothea, I see your.
I do have people ready to speak, um, including someone from PCBA and HPP.
Yeah, I think if we could hear specifically from, take those two comments from each board, I think that would be helpful for us to move forward.
Okay.
Just specifically those.
Mr. Marshall, you're allowed to speak.
Thank you, Dorothea. Um, with regard to the outstanding litigation regarding seventy-five Monroe, which is currently in appeal, and after considerable discussion with attorney. Or under attorney-client privilege, uh, we offer the following comment in unanimity. The PCBA has consistently indicated its willingness to consider new proposals regarding Westport, Westport Crossing. We respectfully request a detailed site plan, which includes size, scale, elevations, parking, landscape. And public amenity details, as indicated in our prior communication. We are willing to discuss the plans after sufficient time for review, and will then consider advancing our discussion in either private or public. At that time. We offer no further comment at this time.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback.
Okay, I'm waiting for. Yes, Ms. Kova's here, she had typed in a question, I'm waiting to see if she wants to speak live, I'm waiting for her answer.
I, I have a question about that, I, I believe she's refused, is, is that allowed? I, I don't know.
Yeah, she, she's recused, I, I would, I was expecting maybe to hear from Mr. McBride.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware she was accused, um. Mr. McBride, I'm not sure if he's in a call-in, I mean.
I did have a brief, I can't say that I had a brief phone call with him, um, he was receptive to it. Only to the extent to just receive the information. Um, you know, no guarantees on anything, um, pretty much, I think, what we're all. Talking about. He also wanted to have the plans ahead of time.
Yeah, I want to address that, cause also Mr. Marshall addressed that, I, I, uh. I've made a lot of presentations in my life, and when, when they're really big, I don't want to send it over ahead of time. I gotta walk people through it, and, and I, I don't think that's too much to ask. I, I think sending over something without giving context on a big, enormous project. Is, is a lot to ask of somebody, and that's just an opinion, so I, I would allow them to walk us through it.
Thank you, okay, no, appreciate that, um, I think in terms of an action item, then. Um, we, we have already heard from one board, I would, I would, um, think that, uh, please forward that. Uh, your, the comments from your board, Dave, to. To all of us and the village clerk. And, um.
I'm sorry, I believe Mr. McBride is on one of the callers, I could unmute them and.
That would be great.
Could find him, give me one second. Is this Mr. McBride? If you are, you need to unmute. Okay, try one more.
Okay.
If this is Mr. McBride, you're allowed to speak, if you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, hold on, hold on.
Steve?
Yeah, I have Bill on the phone here, he, he's trying to get in, and he. Now, I could probably, he, I mean, he could probably speak, and you could hear him through my phone.
Okay, let's try it, I mean, cause we'd like to hear from him, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Bill.
Okay, I'm sorry for the inconvenience, um, Bill McBride, and I'm, uh, Chair of the. HPP, uh, for the adjudication of seventy-five Monroe. Um, I, I have been in conference with, uh, uh, all of my, uh, members, and, um. Bottom line is, here's where we come out, we, we would be happy. To hear a presentation, uh, from the applicant, uh. Uh, on, uh, from their, their new architect on how, uh. They come out on our requirements that we sent out in our February, uh, letter. Uh, a little uncomfortable that that's gonna be a public meeting for public comment, as it is the, the very first. Uh, uh, step in the, uh, adjudication process. But, uh, if that's necessary, uh, uh, with all the full, uh. Uh, board, uh, then so be it, uh. We would, of course, like to see that followed up then with a, uh, what we all call. For information-only meeting between our board and the applicant. Uh, as, uh, we would encourage each one of the, uh. Uh, boards to do on their own, uh, responsibility. Where I, I am uncomfortable with having joint sessions. Uh, between all three boards after the initial presentation, uh, as a follow-up. Uh, and, uh, when those follow-ups occur, uh, for information only, then they could be public. Uh, uh, if it is necessary to make it a non-public meeting. In the very first one by only having two members of, of, uh. Uh, the board, um, in, in terms of, uh, respondents, uh, to the applicant's presentation. Then we would prefer that. Uh, but we, we see this as a series of, of, uh. Meetings, starting off with the one that, uh, Dan has proposed with maybe a little modification to that.
Thank you, Bill.
That represents my boards, uh, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Bill, tha- thanks for calling in, appreciate that, that feedback. Any other comments from this board?
Uh, no, none from mine, no.
Okay, thank you, thanks so much. Okay.
I had my phone, Bill.
Can you, can you mute Steve, thank you, thanks. Okay, um, so going forward, we have the meeting on the twenty-second. To possibly set a date. Should we be?
I'd propose that we.
Looking towards, excuse me, one second, looking towards that, but we, we also need to. Um, and I, I am really listening to, to Jeff's just basic comments. We, we certainly need, I think, as trustees, also to get back with our counsel regarding this. Uh, relative to where we are with new code, old code, moving forward. I think that's important, I think that for us, that's the next step. Is anybody in agreement, nodding?
Yes, I agree, I agree, first step.
I, yeah, I think, I think that's important for us, um, and then we, we bring this back to the twenty-second and. You know, make that decision for setting that date.
So just so I'm clear, so we're going to set the date of, of a possible, not calling it a meeting? Presentation? Presentation for the 22nd and sort of talk to our lawyers and iron out the details between now and then? Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, you know, keep, keep it moving forward. Let's see what we can do. Yes, Jeff?
Again, not advising the board, but a suggestion as to process if you're going to proceed that way. The H P B has a meeting coming up on next Monday. I'm not certain when the Z B A is meeting. But if you were to send some proposal to those two boards, they wouldn't be, they would be in a position to react to you. And I, I, I almost think the P C B A is meeting on the 21st, but I'm not certain.
Okay.
So that everybody then would be in a position to give you their input on a specific proposal of how you see this thing playing out.
Yep, I think that that's a solid suggestion and thank you for that. Appreciate it. We're, we're taking comments from members of either the P C B A or the H P B. We're trying to move this forward.
Be specific, non-recused members.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have no more comments if you're not taking the rest of the.
Okay, thank you. So we, we, we have an action plan now. We're going to speak, get, get with our legal counsel and come back on the 22nd. We're hopefully going to be putting together something that we, that is a little more definitive. We've heard from both boards in terms of what they're looking for, excuse me, what they're looking for. And then we can, you know, pull that together based on what, what our understanding is legally moving forward.
We'll also have to reach out to Mr. De Marzo.
Yeah.
If it works for him, I don't know.
Yeah, and he, and yes, exactly. So, and we will do that as well. Okay, moving on, the updated H O P R agreement.
That's mine. That's Hopper. That's the bike share.
Do we want to maybe take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Been at this for almost about two hours.
I would love to grab a glass of water. So if we can just do a quick break.
Make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
She wants that water.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, I.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, I.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, I.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, I.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
And Dorothea, pause the recording. Don't stop the recording.
Okay.
I'm going to keep my camera off while I eat.
Okay, we're, the trustees are back.
Thank you, Dan.
I make, I make a motion to bring this meeting back to order. Is there a second?
Lampier, second.
Roll call. Everybody jumped spaces here. Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, I.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, I.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, I.
Trustee Keating?
Yeah, I.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I. Dan, you said that with a mouthful.
It's supposed to be visible.
We don't want to hear that, Dan.
Okay, so let's.
Lily just said you're supposed to be visible, so I'll turn my camera on.
Yeah, you're supposed, I think, strictly speaking, that have Dorothy verify that. But I do believe that you can be excused from the meeting and that's fine.
Okay, we're just going to move along. We've got business to conduct here. So we were talking about the updated Hopper agreement.
Yes, so I put this on the agenda in the hopes that we might be at a point where we could take action on it. But I think we have a few more. We need to cross a few more Ts and dots more Is. I just forwarded it to Jeff. The new plan with, with Hopper, which is the bike share, is they would like us to consider a joint agreement with the towns of Brighton, Pittsburgh, and Rondacote. And I, they just sent the, the latest round of edits from the town of Brighton. And I haven't yet been able to compare it to what we, you know, we went over this with a fine-tooth comb before as a village and gave them comments. And I want to just do a side-by-side comparison to see if anything is, is different. Jeff may have already done that, but that's the update. We are, the town of Pittsburgh and I are meeting with Hopper tomorrow at 1:00 to go over the locations. They're, it got a little delayed for the locations in the town, but, so I don't really have an update on that. But Jeff, do you have any guidance for how we should proceed with the agreement?
Well, I've looked at it and I've, I've checked my comments and all but one was dealt with. But I, I'm not, I don't know how this is a joint agreement because this one is just with the town of Brighton. So I still don't know or understand if they anticipate an agreement that will be signed by, one agreement signed by all municipalities or an agreement, an identical agreement that will be signed only by each municipality. So the other thing I would ask if they can do is if they could do whatever they eventually send us with a red line of the changes between that and what we looked at the first time. I think that would make for a much more efficient review from our end.
Is there, what are, I guess I don't understand what the value is in a joint agreement for us versus, like, why, why can't we just?
Nor do I.
Okay.
I, I, I don't understand what, there, there is no practical or legal difference between having an identical agreement with each municipality rather than having one agreement with all municipalities.
Okay, so.
I, I would rather have just one agreement, I'm, I'm sorry, one agreement with each municipality so that, that we're not all signing the same thing.
Can I ask, why, why was it presented that way to begin with? Was, was there any discussion as to why that would have been an advantage?
No, we're meeting tomorrow. This is new since, so I'll ask that, that question. I mean, Jeff and I spoke briefly last week before, when they first posed this idea. And, you know, we can say no too if we, if it's not in our, or it won't benefit us. So anyway, I don't know. We'll ask that question tomorrow at the meeting.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know of any disadvantage. It would, it depends on the language of the agreement. So we would really need to see exactly what it is they want us to sign. That's, you know.
Right. And, I mean, we, we've been ready to go. We only have one station that's ours. And we've been ready to go since last year. So, you know, we already kind of agreed. We went through this. So I'm, I'm very interested to hear why they want us to, to do this. But, so again, this was on the agenda when I thought we'd be able to vote on it, but there's the update. We'll have to bring it back for the, for the next meeting.
So, so most fruitfully, we need from them exactly what it is they want us to sign with red lines, if possible, red line changes from the very first agreement.
Okay, so there's a little bit more, more to do and you'll, you can bring it back. So thank you. Thanks for the update too. Okay, next item, where are we here? I'm sorry, public comment discussion? Lily?
I had proposed this at a previous meeting under member items. And it came as a surprise to me, I'm going to admit this, that public meetings did not mean that the public could speak. And that came as quite a shock. So I would like to formalize that, as they have done in the town of Pittsburgh, allowing for public comment, has brief public comment after each item that's being discussed. And a formalized public comment period sometime during the meeting, beginning and wherever the board thinks that it would best be served. And that could be an open forum. Go ahead, Jeff, I'm sorry. You're, you're muted, though.
I, I don't want to interrupt you, Lily. I just had a thought, but I don't want to interrupt you.
Okay, so that if, if a resident had an observation or something that they would like to bring to the board's attention, it's an opportunity for them. Because I, to me, that's the whole beauty of village government. It's not another layer between us and the people that we serve. So to have them have an opportunity to bring things to our attention or to give us their view would be most welcome. And that's my opinion. I'm just asking how the board would like to handle that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, and I, Jeff, I, you, you wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I don't know whether this is great minds think alike, but Dorothea and I have been discussing this whole topic. And we really thought that it would behoove us to come up with something to suggest to the whole board. Maybe after polling other communities to see how they do it. So that there would be an app, a, a great app, you know, we get the opportunity to hear from the public. But the, the board also then has the opportunity to move through its business in a more streamlined and efficient fashion. So I guess what I, I, my, my thought would be, and Dorothea and I thought about this, is we would like to put a proposal together for the board that the board could tweak, but at least, you know, would start out with our thoughts, particularly with input from how not just the town does it, but other communities do it. And then obviously, it's going to be, whatever happens is going to be up to the board. But, I mean, I thought that Dorothea and I could take that on as a, a possible, you know, we come up with some kind of proposal and then the trustees could shoot at it, whatever they wanted, way they wanted.
Love it.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah. Very much appreciate it.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, yeah, thanks Lily too for.
Then we will be committee of two to report to the board.
That, that's great. Okay, thanks a lot.
Probably not by the 22nd, but by the July meeting.
Okay.
Is that all right? Or do you want it sooner?
That works for me.
Yep.
Oh.
It's all good. I mean, I think it's fine. I think it's great. Thanks. Thanks for doing that. Awesome. Okay.
Mayor Plummer, we do have a request to speak.
Oh, okay. Does the board wish to entertain a speaker? Yeah, I've been hearing nods. Okay, yes?
Mr. Paris, you're allowed to speak.
Thank you. Once again, our pure 70 State Street, thank you very much. Both for letting me speak, number one, and Lily for your comments. They're greatly appreciated. And obviously Attorney Turner for your discussions with Dorothea, greatly appreciated. Because here again, I've prepared many boards across many states, many years. And I've never experienced a board not letting public comment be made. Getting into the question, back to Monroe, I had just a couple of quick questions. I'm not quite sure why there's a new application for an application that's currently, apparently, I thought I heard it's already been settled on the behalf of the village favor. That was actually the quote words I had that they had lost several lawsuits, quote unquote, from one of the trustees during this meeting. Number one. Number two is, why would you even entertain a application, presentation, whatever you want to name it, outside a standard village review process? When my understanding and very broad-brush terms, that the confusion on processes is all, has been a problem in past applications, and I've heard that repeatedly over the months, if not years, that the board has been concerned and heard concerns of applicants saying there's not a very clear, clean process. And yet here, you're introducing potentially another new element into a process which people, that being the village, has labored over some time. And I thought and worked with the various boards to develop a clean, clear process for applicant as well as for the sake of the residents to understand what is going on. Also, if possible, if the email that went to the village from Chris De Marzo could be made available. I understand that that might be public record since it was spoken of today, made reference to specifically. Would appreciate hear that. If it should go before proceeding with the presentation, I, I concur with Lily's comments about written questions being made. But then all questions from the public, as well as the various boards, whatever the makeup would be, would be coming back from the developer in written form, a very clear transcript. So everybody can follow here again the process if this is to be a new, unique process. My other concern, and last but not least, is that this might be setting a precedent and causing more confusion for applicants in the future, as well as all the boards. Because now it's a new process that hasn't been really thought out. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. Thanks so much for your comments. Okay, so moving on, the next item is the Arboretum and the Wildlife Sanctuary follow-up. Justin, Justin, do you want to unmute yourself so we, we can speak to that?
Yeah, sure. Would you like to start this out or, or I can as well?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can briefly just, just outline it. We are going to be setting up, as I said in the last meeting, a walkthrough of the Arbor reading with all of the trustees and it will be publicly noticed. We're hoping to work it out for next week. But given that, we were able to pull together very quickly a walkthrough today with, let me get his, I want to get the names correct. Gary Copland, who was the Deck Forestry Management Contact for our region. We also had Dave Will. He is the Lead Naturalist for Citizen Science with the Seneca Park Zoo Society. And it runs teams for eradication of invasives. We also had Scott Harder, our village engineer with us. Zach was, was with us and Steve as well. And also Justin was able to join us. So we just had me, so there were two of us. And we just quickly walked through the site and got some ideas from really the experts here. And they, they proposed a plan. And Steve, also, you may want to weigh in on this in terms of just the phase of remediation, like the next steps, the short-term steps. So I'm just going to, you know, list them off very quickly. Where it is, the silt fencing is at the top of the hill. Where it has been cleared, the mediation, remediation will still continue. And that will be to plant rye grass, which will stabilize that runoff from the top of that hill. And then there will be mulch put down as well, and mulch in this instance will be straw. Where the trees are located on the other side of that hill, they will be designated as reforestation work in process. And the D P W will help us just knock down some of the weeds. But that part will be fenced off to protect those trees. Let's see, then we also are looking at bringing in, and this would be at no cost to us. This is part of an outreach program through the Seneca Park Zoo and also through Prism, which is organized very similarly to the Deck regions. And it is the Partnership for Remediation of Invasive Species Management. I think I've got the acronym correct, Justin. I don't know, maybe you remember the acronym. But they will be doing a walkthrough. Their team will come through the site and map the site for invasives and also identify native trees. This will be a map that will be turned over to all of us and we can all work with it. Then they will also come back and make remediation plans and proposals for us for the entire site. They also are planning to engage our community on, I believe it's July 24th. They're looking at that date for an invasive species hike and to educate everybody about what's going on and the types of programs that will be hopefully initiating on that site. So that was a little bit of what came out today. They, everybody wants to come back again with the entire board. So they can bring everybody up to speed. They're absolutely excited about this project. They really, really are looking forward to working with us and with our community. And Justin, please, please chime in because there's so much. I tried to cover sort of the highlights.
Or, yeah, there, there is a lot. And I, I agree with everything that you said in, in your summary of, of what took place today. Unfortunately, it could only be two board members due to open meetings law. But we're looking forward to the next meeting where we have the, the full board as well as a public notice for people in the public who want to attend and, and walk around with some of the experts that I've been learning a lot from. The, so as, as Mayor. The, so as as Mayor Plummer mentioned, we've got a a couple of different phases here. We've got the the short term needs and and the longer term planning, and it seems that we're we're all in agreement about those those different phases of the project. As Mayor Plummer mentioned, we've got short term work to complete our, to fulfill our obligations under stormwater requirements that Steve is is much more of an expert on than than I am, but I did speak with Scott Harder about that. And the rye grass and straw is is a necessary step to do that. Some of the silt barriers can be moved as as we reach final stabilization of the soil, which is defined as eighty percent vegetative coverage with perennial plants, then those silt barriers can can be moved around. There's still some work that's ongoing, so there will be some areas that are closed off. And we'll, we discussed some signage around those to explain to the public what's going on. And I I guess the other, we we talked about some care of the existing trees, which seem to be doing well. And it seems that, and and Elise, you can jump in here too about what we discussed and and next steps. But it seems that the DPW, we'd we'd look for their help in taking care of some of the trees with weeding and maybe applying some mulch as necessary in the areas that need to be closed off due to maintenance.
And. May I interject very briefly about that? You are correct about weeding and some of the maintenance, but our our hope is to engage our community with that and work with the the naturalists from Seneca Zoo. So, you know, the team can go in. They'll be able to supervise and and show us how to do it. It'll be very, very limited specifically to the those trees. The other weeds that are around, they the invasives, they said we we will wait until fall, hopefully, where we will be able to implement. Then really wheat, full wheat suppression, probably at the end of September, October, October was what they were thinking of mid October, I guess. Full wheat suppression and then planting, they have a special blend of a type of prairie seed that will take hold over the winter and then bloom in spring. So DPW maybe can help us with the rye grass portion of it, do the quick knockdown a little bit knocking back some of the weeds in the larger areas, but the handwork, the handwork, we are hoping to reach out to our community and volunteers to help. So, yeah, so you're you're correct with it. It's just, I don't want to hang it all in the DPW.
Yeah, absolutely. I I agree. And well, I'll I'll let Lily go ahead too.
It just triggered, it just triggered. Thank you very much for conceding the floor to me for a moment. And that is that there has been some interest in what I was calling the adopt adopt a tree idea, and I think that someone put it up on Facebook as a concept, and there were about fifty responses, all positive. So it's something that maybe the board would like to consider, that we have instituted adopted tree program where a family or a person, individual would adopt their tree and they would help mulch weed, feed whatever, from with direction from the naturalist. It's just a concept I'd like to have the board consider.
Sure, what, could you pull together maybe for, well, the next meeting, I don't know how full the agenda is, but could you pull together some guidelines for for what that would look like? You know, that'd be interesting. Thank you. That'd be great. Steve, did you have anything else you want? I'm sorry, Justin, did you have anything more to add before I just?
No, just that, you know, I I agree also that we, our goal is not to toss everything on the DPW here. I I was only indicating that they would be, you know, if there were certain areas that were inaccessible for safety reasons in the short term, maybe that's something they could jump in and pull a couple. And and I also appreciate trustee Lanfier's suggestion here, and and it's great to hear there's public interest in in helping out. And I would certainly support that initiative. And and as we're we're discussing this in in terms of the sequencing, it sounds like that's the next month or so, so that when Prism comes in, and I don't remember what the acronym stands for either. You do a better job of that than I do, but then, so when they come in, they'll actually have live trees that have been maintained so that they can give us further direction.
Great, thank you. Steve, did you, did you have anything else to add to this in terms of what?
I think I think you guys have covered it pretty clearly. I think we we came up with a great game plan to cordon off, you know, to stabilize anything that is exposed and then to cordon off a small area that we we are concerned about public safety, but open up the majority of it to the public. And then Lily's idea of having adopt a tree, I think, is is wonderful, because you do have a hundred and eighty seven trees. I I don't know how many are on the town property that that we kind of technically aren't responsible for, but I got to believe we've probably got a hundred and forty up there that are ours to try and figure out to maintain. So I applaud that that idea of having the public involved and and adopt a tree.
Right, yeah, we're still sorting sorting that out with, you know, the town and everything. Zach, was there anything you wanted to add, and just in terms of the experience today and moving forward?
Uh, no, I think you guys covered everything pretty well.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, Justin.
I I just wanted to, I I noticed in the the chat, I'm not sure if the members of the public can see that, but there there was a comment from Sue Julian, who's a village resident and and said that the the garden club is is interested in helping, which.
Oh, wonderful. That'd be fantastic. Great. All hands on deck. We love that.
The public involvement is is absolutely fantastic to see, and and I think that this is going to be a a great project, you know, not to foreclose possibilities for planning in the future, but just to to get engagement at at this level is is really wonderful to see.
That's what it's about, you know, our community, it's a wonderful piece of piece of land, and our community needs to be engaged to help plan how we want it all to look and plan it for the future and for future generations, absolutely. And then another thing that I wanted to cover, and and we'll be getting back to the board members, just to close this out, we'll be getting back to the board members with a couple of dates to do the walk, you know, where we can all be together. It's a three, Dorothea, correct me, a three day notice, public notice? For the site visit?
Yes, it would be three days I need for notification.
So we'll we'll work on that and try to coordinate it with everybody and also everybody walking. Another thing too, and and Jeff and I are going to be working on a resolution similar to kind of setting up like the comp plan committee to set up a stewardship committee for this. And Jeff, maybe you want to speak to that, but it's just something we were talking about. So there's sort of the, you know, the nexus for help with planning and how we all move forward. Yeah. Jeff, anything to add, or I mean, that's we were talking about that.
That says it all. If, you know, you were going to work up something, I was going to turn it into a resolution. We'll have it ready for the board.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. So despite the rain today, it was it was fun to walk and we and we saw, oh, Justin caught a beautiful shot of a deer. We should post that.
I will send you the picture. Yeah, it was it was great. That was as as we were leaving, we saw a deer on the the town side of the the town side of the nature preserve.
Right, and I guess it was two days ago, three little fawns were were found behind DPW. Am I correct, Zach? And I think there was one little newborn. Yeah, I know. It's nice. It's nice to to know. Okay, so moving on. Banner requests. Lily?
I I brought these to the board's attention. They should be in your packet because, as you know, we have, we received three requests for banners simultaneously. One was discussed and and also acted upon, but the other two have not been discussed by the board. And in the interest of equality and also fairness moving forward as to how our board will be dealing with banner requests. I would like us to discuss these requests and to formulate some sort of criteria for reviewing them, accepting them or not. And so that I'm opening it to the board's discussion. I I believe you had it in your packet. One letter was from Ms. Sykes, and another was from a young woman named Kelly. And I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now, but you've seen the letters and I'm asking for input from the board so that we have, in in the interest of equal time, given everyone an opportunity.
You know, I was, the letter, the letter regarding the flying the Irish flag, recognizing, you know, the 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 history really with Irish immigrants in our village, building the Erie Canal, really got me to thinking, you know, I mean, I appreciate flying the Irish flag. I get that part of wanting to try to make to recognize and acknowledge that history. But I've reached out to Audrey Johnson and Vicky Prophet, our historians. I've emailed them, I've yet to yet to hear back, but I thought it would be interesting, really, if we want, if we want to celebrate that. It would be a wonderful way to create an event about, you know, around the Erie Canal and the contributions from the Irish community at the time and really, you know, what that was like. And also, I think it'd be great to have a marker perhaps in the Bowton area area neighborhood marking it as Little Dublin, because that actually is where so many of the Irish workers on the canal lived, and it tells part of that story in our community. And I'm bringing that back to the board just for consideration. I think it's a nice way to really tell people. I mean, I I get why they want to fly the flag, but I think this really tells the story potentially. Any thoughts?
I I would like to add to that, I guess. Thank you. I would like to add to that, that perhaps our historian could help us formulate a proclamation maybe farther along in the in the year that we could accept, read and accept as a board perhaps acknowledging the contribution to the Erie Canal and the history of our area by the Irish community. And perhaps if we wrote that proclamation, it might then open the door for us to discuss a banner hanging, a flag hanging at Village Hall.
You know, I think, or I was thinking if we're doing the marker, that that could be a really nice ceremony with the marker, you know, identifying the history of Little Dublin in that neighborhood. I think, you know, that's that's something that is, I think, to me, sort of more lasting because it's such a strong component of our history. I like, but I think we're all saying the same thing, you know.
Yes, on Bowton Avenue, you're talking about Bowton Avenue.
Yeah, Bowton Avenue, and you know, historic Pittsburgh, I'm sure could help us out. It'd be great, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, just thinking about that. Yeah, Dan.
So that's a great idea, Lily. Why don't you write it up? Just a thought. Some of us, somebody's got to write it. So do you want to take a cut at the first draft?
Yes, I think, but I was thinking that we would be maybe a little bit closer to St. Patrick's Day is kind of what I was thinking at that scene, just kind of trying, maybe, I don't know. But I think March is was sort of acknowledged in that letter, that was what she was looking at, you know, is March. So yes, I'm I'm happy to work with Audrey and with Vicky, coming up with a proclamation honoring our the contribution made by Irish Americans. Now to the second, the second letter that we have received from the young woman, I think it was called the Thin Blue Line, is she was requesting a banner. The time has passed, I believe, for that. It was this month. But perhaps the board would at least be willing to begin a conversation regarding the next opportunity. So I I welcome your input.
Okay, any any thoughts from from folks? I mean, it, I know what you're saying, it's already passed, but, you know, I mean, we certainly could consider it in the future, I guess. I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to consider, there's nothing frankly before us right now to consider. I understand that. So maybe we should bring it back in the future when there is something like this. Should we do that? Anything from the board? Hello?
Sure, they can bring it back and it will be considered.
Yeah, you know, why not?
Yeah, I would be, I did either of the 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 people who submitted those, have they contacted us again to to follow up? Are they interested in pursuing anything in the the future or?
Well, I I reached out to Ms. Sykes, you know, about the idea of, oh, let's celebrate the history and really, you know, it's another layer of telling the story of our village. And I guess she was out of town, and I I said, let's get get in touch with us when you come back and we can walk, do a walk and show the area of Little Dublin and talk about it. And Lily, you know, if you can follow follow up as well, that'd be great.
I think she's here at this meeting. I don't know if she's interested in speaking.
Oh, great, okay.
I don't have a chat thing. I don't know where my chat thing is, so I don't know if people are trying to speak or not, but she is here.
Or at least get in touch with us, you know, afterward, so we can follow up.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we we, sure, we can do that. And then the next item here is press releases. Policies on press releases.
The next one?
Yeah. The next, the next item, policies on press releases.
Oh, policies, policies, got it.
We also have Boy Scout Equal. I I think there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I told it right over and I apologize.
And press releases.
I apologize. So let's, should we start with Boy Scouts first? Always. Yeah, Lily, we were talking about the guidelines for scouts when they want to come into Village Hall for for badges. Oh, you're muted, I think.
I guess something going on.
Yeah.
Okay. I might have to leave. Yes, we were going to put something up on the village website.
Right, you were going to do a draft for us of the guidelines.
Okay, okay, I can do that. I'm sorry, I'm very distracted. I'm going to have to excuse myself. I have something that's just occurred.
Okay.
Family, I I apologize.
No problem.
So sorry.
No, we'll we'll get with you afterwards. Not a problem. Okay. Well, we'll just follow up, I guess, afterwards. We'll move on to member items.
I've got a few, but if somebody else wants to go first, they're welcome to.
I can do a very quick update. I was trying to reach SRF Traffic Consulting. Finally got a response from them. I guess they've been busy and some other people have been out. We're going to try to meet regarding the traffic study on Shane Place. It just came in right, literally right before this meeting, the return email. Probably on Monday or Tuesday. Those are the two days we're looking at, so we can follow up. And Zach, if you could be there, you know, we can confirm that appointment.
This is next week?
Yeah. Oh, are you off?
I'm off that week.
Then you know what, leave leave the notes for me that you, you know, in terms of things you want me to specifically cover. Because, you know, it's the clock's ticking on the bridge being finished, so. Yeah, that would be great. And and Renee, if you want to be part of that as well.
I would, can you send me the details and I'll make sure.
I will send you the details. They haven't, they just got back and said we want to meet maybe next.
Okay, then I can be part of choosing the meeting time. Awesome.
Yes, absolutely. Sweet. We'll put you in the loop. Okay, great. That's really all I have. Yes, Justin?
Just a really quick one, something that came to mind related to the arboretum. Mayor Plummer, you and I spoke about the trail leading to the arboretum, and and we mentioned that perhaps Renee might have some insights on on as in terms of trails and how they should be prepared, anything standards related. So we could probably follow up after the meeting and and get any input you might have on that.
Thanks for that. Great, okay.
We do, and we have standards from the the towns project that just occurred that we can use as a as a guiding.
Right, they meet the requirements. You're right. Thank you. Okay, any other member items? Dan?
Yeah, I've got a couple really quickly. So I'm going to share my screen and and kind of walk you guys through what happened with the CCA this week. To to those who are not aware, the CCA bids come in, we have, we have like hours to determine them. So we had enacted a local law that enabled Mayor Plummer and I to view those bids and make a decision on behalf of everybody because we don't have time to call a meeting. So here's what happened. We ended up saying no to the bid. And let me just really quickly kind of show you what, I I can just show you in a couple of graphs really quickly. Here's where the blue bars, this is the one year pricing. You guys are probably seeing my screen, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so this is, this is over the last year, and the blue bars, this is our G and E pricing. July, August, September, blah, blah, blah. They came in, so there was a huge spike in June of this year. It had been hovering around this four, three, five, four, oh, eight, four, one, nine, blah, blah, blah. This red line is the trend over the last year. So that's what's happened to the prices, slight trend up. The CCA came in at this orange line. The the actual number was point oh, five, eight, which just didn't seem high enough. Now, if this trend continues and June is, you know, a low month and it and it grows from there, well, then that orange line is going to be a a good bargain, but we just, you can't base that on one. a good bargain, but we just, you can't base that on one month's worth of data. If you look at it over two years, which is down here, you do see some seasonality. So we had a spike a year ago in June above the others and then it kind of settled down into a trend and then it spiked again. So, look, we don't know what's gonna happen. We've got the CCA telling us, oh, prices are gonna go up, prices are going, going to go up. You should lock in here. But we really have no evidence of that. And so we made that call. Now, here's the same view on a six-month. So over the last six months, the prices have increased 61%, but even on the last six months, it's still not even meeting the six-month trend with that huge spike of a month. The only other thing I want to point out is we did receive a bid in October that three of the trustees said no to. That's the green line here. That would have been a good thing to lock in because it's, it's really right at the six-month trend. But we didn't make that and we can't turn, turn back the clock. So that's basically it. If you need more information, I'm happy to, happy to provide. Make sense?
Dan, can I?
Yeah, Renee.
I just wanted to point out something, a follow-up to what you just said, that three, three of the trustees didn't want to go forward with it. And it was because we had originally told the public that, that it was gonna be a valuation of one period and that it was a change in that. And some of the trustees at the time felt that we needed to take that back to the public.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, and that was, okay, and I hear you on that. And that was a
A missed oppor, and it was a missed opportunity. We knew, we knew that we weren't ever gonna probably get, get that rate again.
Yeah. And, and the, the challenge with that, Renee, was that that was a made-up number that we had said. And so we were sticking to a made-up number that we made up out of stubbornness and not out of good math. So anyhow, but yes, you're right. Factually, you are correct.
Okay, thanks for putting the graphs out. I think that really helps. Justin, are you stretching or did you have your hand up?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, just a quick follow-up. Thank you for the, the graphs on that, Dan. And if you ever want to send those around, I'd be happy to also play around with the, the spreadsheets. It would help me to understand if there's anything that we're gonna take action on. So, thank you.
Sure. I have a couple other member items really quickly. So just in the interest of, of being, of having full disclosure around 75 Monroe, I was personally approached twice within the last week by a member of, somebody who was associated with Friends of Pittsburgh Village at one time. I don't know if they're currently associated with Friends of Pittsburgh Village. They are recused from giving, they're on a village board. They are recu, it's Mike Reynolds. They're, he is recused from 75 Monroe deliberations. But just as I've been public about meeting with Chris DiMarzo and when and what the nature of that was, and I've been public about meeting with Friends of Pittsburgh Village and when and what the nature of that was. I also want to put this on the record. Mr. Reynolds was, in my opinion, loosely threatening the board and trying to influence us to not have a meeting with the developer. And so in the interest of full disclosure, in disclosing meetings with DiMarzo and, and Mr. DiMarzo, excuse me, and Friends of Pittsburgh Village also wanted to disclose this. So there was one email sent just to me and Mayor Plummer on June 6th, and I forwarded that to the other board members as well. So you guys had a copy of it. And then there was another one sent on June 8th, which is today, and that was sent to all of the trustees as well as some of the members of the other boards. So do we read those into the record? What, what do we do?
I don't know. Is that a legal question? Is that something Jeff, you'd like to address?
I don't think they're a part of the record of this proceeding.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary to read them in. I think you've noted it as a member item that you received the contact. You know, and it's been circulated to everybody. Maybe you could just, you know, provide it to the clerk and she could put it in the record. I mean, not the record of this meeting, but just in their, in that file.
As a matter of record.
Yeah, okay. And then the last thing I had was, we had talked about this a couple of months ago and it, it seemed to have stalled about giving me access to be able to make Facebook posts on behalf of the village. So I don't know where that was.
Well, there was no change in the policy because the policy right now is that village, village staff does the posting. We simply, we submit the post with them or work with them on a post. I've done that a number of times. I mean, that's how it was left. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to amend that to include members designated by the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
I will second the motion so that we can have a discussion about this. I think that's how it needs to work. Second.
Okay, we bring it back for discussion?
We didn't update our policy yet, so I think I, some concerns were before, if I recall, just having a sort of checks and, and balance system somehow so that we all agreed what was gonna go out. I don't know how we, that was just one of the concerns and I know that was one of Lily's concerns and she's not here. So I just want to address that. So if we're appointing a single trustee or several trustees, you know, how do we assure that everyone agrees to what's going out?
The, the answer to that is, you know, just sort of giving veto power. If something goes up that somebody really doesn't like the wording of, and, and, you know, guys, this is really, this is not politics. This is just, this is PR. Just meant to be able to inform people without having to make an appointment with Dorothea or Marina or, or whomever. These things happen in real time and they happen quickly. And we're not communicating well. So this is a way, you've got two trained PR professionals on the board.
Well, I also think it's incumbent upon, you know, all of the trustees, if there's something that you feel that really could go up quickly on Facebook, I, I certainly think that Marina, you know, Dorothea may be busy, but certainly Marina could respond to that, you know. I mean, I've had, never had a problem with that in terms of just turning something right over, but that's, that's me. Justin, did, you had your hand up?
Yeah, sure. I appreciate this being brought up for discussion. I think that it's important for us to communicate effectively. So we should discuss issues that might be preventing us from doing so. And I also appreciate trustee Stetser's second so that we can, we can have this discussion. The, for me, the Mayor Plummer is the spokesperson, the one who's authorized on the board to make those releases to the press or on social media with the, the office staff. And I don't feel that it would be appropriate to be delegating that to any individual trustee regardless of, of level of experience.
Okay, I disagree.
Okay. Well, Lily, Lily isn't here to weigh in. I don't, you know, there's, there's a motion before us. Is there any further discussion or should we call this to a vote? Okay, Dorothea?
Okay, trustee Stetser?
I'm voting no because we don't have good clarity on this yet on how it works. Not, you know, I know Dan's trained. I'm a trained PR person. I, I just need a little, a little more discussion on this.
Okay, what would you like clarity on?
Well, I
Well, we're voting right now.
Okay.
We're in a vote. We're, we're calling a vote. Sorry, Dan. We can always bring this back.
Trustee Lightgeb?
No.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
No.
Motion doesn't pass.
Okay, so what, what would you like clarity on? Just the kinds of, already outlined this, the kinds of things that would be posted.
Yeah, if we could agree on that ahead of time, that would be different. Like if we had an editorial calendar and we're like, okay, these are the things we're gonna post about. But if it's something where we just finished up a meeting and we're gonna share, you know, much like what we do on our, on our Facebook pages, our trustee Facebook pages, there can be more editorialization. That's not a word, but editorializing. And I think that's what I've heard is the concern about any one of us being the, having access to the Facebook page. So if we had an agreed upon, you know.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I thought it was clear that that's, it's not editorial content.
So the intent, is it because you, you mentioned the word real time. So it's because you're feeling that the turnaround in the office isn't quickly, quick enough? I'm trying to understand, you know, because we already have two people that potentially can do postings.
Okay, okay. And we have two people that can do postings during certain hours. And those two people are not trained in communication. And, and the, the, the brand of our village could be improved through better communication and social media. And so to give it to somebody who knows what they're doing in that area, and I don't mean any disrespect.
Sure.
I just mean that Dorothy, you have about a million skills that I don't have. So I mean, no disrespect. It's, it's just a matter of wanting to improve the public face of our village, which has been very negative for a long time.
So I don't understand, you know, like I've written up posts and they just get posted. I don't, I mean, I don't understand why, why any one of us can't write up a post.
Because I'm being told I can't. I'm being told that I've got to, I gotta send it to you and then you've got to send it to Marina and Dorothea and that just doesn't seem like an efficient way to do things.
Well, I've never seen, I, I, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm I don't know. I think, I think we need to give it another shot here. There has been one, a post that you wrote up, which I thought was, was great, but the timing of it, you know, we had that discussion. So
That's not what I'm talking about. It's not at all. I'm talking about day-to-day communication with people. Hey, you guys don't want to do it? You want, don't want to?
No, no, no. But I think, I think maybe what we should do is have, have this, bring this offline and let's sit down with Marina and Dorothea and talk through, you know, what, what that expectation is. Okay. And then if we need to bring it back to the board. Does that make sense for, for everybody else?
It's not a Marina and Dorothea issue.
Okay.
It's a, it's a board issue and, and so the, the problem is, the challenge is not Dorothy and Marina.
Well, okay.
The challenge is, is our board members wanting to put out informational things and things that are, are good PR.
I, I don't understand why any one of our board members wouldn't be able to write something up for a Facebook post. Like I was thinking you took the picture of the deer. You could send it right in and just say, we had a really amazing walk and, you know, we, I mean, there's so many things that we could all be doing. This is not just about, you know, Dan. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, if, if I'm following your logic here, this is something that any, any, all of us can be making contributions. It's not just even me. Does that make sense to the rest of the board?
Sounds, sounds good. And what I would propose is try it for a week.
Well, I would give it more than a week, frankly, just given the way things are going.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is try giving, try giving me
Oh, giving you a week?
Yeah, gi- give me a week. And, and if you don't like a post, you can take it down. But, you know, we got
Okay.
I think we need to, I think we need to improve our public brand. The only time we're in the news is when we're trying to shut down a brewery and try to stop a window at Lock 32 and in 10 years of lawsuits at the, at the on 75 Monroe, it's bad for business.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I really do.
And, and the, the stuff that's coming out is just very
Okay.
straightforward and bland.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Renee?
So this isn't affront to your, to your skills. I think it's, it's a matter of, you know, we are a small village. You are absolutely right. We, we have done a terrible job with communication. We have a brand problem. And most other municipalities have a communications person, a communications team. We don't have that. You're saying you have a communications background. I have a communications background. And we can, we can assist in that. I understand that piece of it. I am more comfortable having a, somebody at Village Hall be that, that gatekeeper.
Okay.
At this point, until we have a better process. And Dan is exactly right. We have a problem. We need to do something about it. I think giving, you know, if you're gonna give one trustee, then you should give it to all of the trustees and that's got its own problem too, to, to balance it out.
I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Be, because you don't have, you have trained PR professionals on the board. I, I'm not an accountant. I, you know, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask to do that. I'm not a surgeon.
Fair enough. Luckily, we're not doing surgery, but
Unfortunately, we're not a medical center.
No, I, I understand. This is not an affront to your skills, Dan, at all. I just want to make sure that, you know, given, right. This seems to be a very tenuous community right now. I want to make sure we're doing things in a very, you know, transparent way where everyone's comfortable. And I, I want to talk some more about how we do this because usually it is handled by a communications team. And we don't have that. We don't even have a communications person who's trained.
Okay, so you want to talk some more? Lily's not here. I think the hour is, is late. I don't know that we're gonna solve
Marina has her, Marina has her hand up.
Oh, where's Oh, I'm sorry. She's up by the, I'm looking for where they
We jump around.
No problem. I was gonna say that, you know, I've spoke with the mayor a little bit about our website too. And she did talk about things that we could do to make it a little more user-friendly, a little more personable. So I don't know if you'd have any interest in working with me on like some techniques that you would like to employ about how we can maybe make our Facebook a little bit more personable as well, get some more like, not as necessarily editorial, but like deer pictures, village pictures, some more stuff like that. I'd be more than happy to work with you. I've got time for it too.
I think that sounds great and that's a starting point. And I did, Marina, I wasn't able, I think you had already left. I spoke with trustee Lightgeb about the website and making that a little bit more user-friendly. And trustee Lightgeb's looking forward, I hope, to working with you on that and just, you know, maybe making some recommendations and how we can make it a little more user-friendly as well. So I think at least that's a starting point. And thank you, Marina, for that. You know, Dan, that, that could be great, I think, you know, helping with Facebook and bringing it along. All right? Okay. Any more member items?
I have a bike rack member item, but I think Zach and I can probably just figure it out offline.
Oh, I saw the communication. Okay, thank you. Yep, I saw that. Okay, well, with that in mind, any, anything else? I'm sorry. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn?
Was there an executive session on the agenda?
I always put one just in case you need one.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not specific. Okay.
Yeah, thanks for asking. Yeah. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Lightgeb, second.
Rocco, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks so much.
Thank you.